I think the right order of business would be to open up the meeting formally.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes. Thank you all. In accordance with section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, be advised that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in town hall and the front door of town hall, forwarding to the Milburn Township clerk and mailing to the Item and the Star Ledger, which publications are the officially designated township newspapers, and notice indicating that this regularly scheduled meeting would take place on Wednesday, December 16th at 7:30 PM at the Milburn Municipal Building. In addition, in accordance with NJSA 1049.1 and NJAC 5391.5B, electronic notice of this remote meeting of at least 48 hours, giving the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting and whether formal action may or may not be taken at this meeting, has been given by posting the same on the Milburn Township official website and on the main access door to the municipal building where the public would routinely attend in-person meetings. As a reminder, in accordance with section 7A of the Open Public Meetings Act, planning boards in general and the Milburn Township Planning Board in particular, do not entertain general public comment, as is otherwise required for municipal governing body or a board of education. However, all members of the public shall have the right to ask questions of witnesses presented by applicants during the course of a public hearing on an application for development, and will further have the right to make any comments with regard to that application at the appropriate time when recognized by the chair, myself. Proper decorum must be observed by all participants. There's a muting function that will be utilized if any member of the public or participant does not observe proper decorum, or is disruptive or unruly. If such conduct persists, that individual may be removed from the public meeting. Thank you. Roll call, Eileen.
Daniel Bear?
Here.
Diane Egglow?
Here.
Yes, and Halpert?
Here.
Jorge Mastro Petro?
Here.
Mark Mattel?
Here.
Tara Prupus?
Here.
Joseph Steinberg?
Here.
David Morrow?
Here.
Chinuk Tana?
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Liren Salerno?
Here.
Chairwoman Betzel?
Here. Thank you.
So before we jump into our agenda, just wanted to wish those of you on a happy holiday who will be, who may be celebrating Hanukkah, upcoming Christmas, wishes for a happy new year for those of us who may not make it to the end of this meeting. And as alluded to by Mr. Bozak, if you were listening earlier, in the event of the weather, playing games on our meeting, if somebody whose server internet goes out, what we will plan to do is to carry this application, anything that was not yet heard at that point, and when we make the recording public, you know, the cutoff point will be as it stands in the public record, if that should happen. And we discussed February 3rd. Again, I will, to be the date of continuation of this application. Again, we will confirm that once again, once we open up the application. But before we get, I just wanted to say that for the record, before we jump too far. And that would again be confirmed on the Milburn Township, the Planning Board landing site within the Milburn Township website. That said, let's move on to our first order of business. And happy birthday to Tara, who's with us this evening. Celebrate. Approval of minutes, let's begin with October 7th of 2020. Eileen, can I just ask, I know you resent it today. Were there corrections made on the version?
No, I just resent them, so everything would be together. There were no corrections made.
Anybody have any further comments or any comments regarding the October 7th minute? Mark, you're muted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure if it was the October 7th meeting or one of the others, but I didn't see it regardless, but I'd like it inserted, I believe, in the parking section of the Woodland-Chatham Roads, you know, segment, something like Mark Mattel requested that a minimum of five charging stations be installed at Woodland/Chatham Development. Mr. LaFonsama concurred.
Okay.
Because they did say they would put a minimum of five in.
Okay, we can capture that in the minutes. And again, that will be something we'll want to formally and officially confirm in any memorialization, you know, in any decision, which has not yet been made, but we can include that in the minutes as well.
For the record. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Anybody? Oh. Okay. I will make a motion with Mark's edits to approve the minutes of October 7th. You have a second?
I'll second. Who was that?
That was Miriam.
Okay.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes of October 7th, 2020 approved. The second set of minutes is from October 28th. Familiarly, if anybody had any questions or corrections? Okay. I will make a motion to approve the minutes of October 28th.
I'll second.
Yes, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, minutes of October 28th approved.
I'm abstaining. I wasn't here.
Thank you, Tara. Abstaining for you were not here. And November 4th. Third set of minutes we received for review. Did anybody have any comments or corrections on the November 4th minutes? Hey, I will make a motion to approve the minutes of November 4th, 2020.
I second that.
Thank you, Jorge. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I think there's any abstentions.
I'm abstaining.
Miriam and Tara did not. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Great. Minutes from our November 4th, 2020 also approved. Okay, thanks for getting that business out of the way. And now we'll move on to the continuation of application 20012. Beehive properties for preliminary final site plan approval.
All right, I will bring over. Mark Chan?
Madam Chair, while we are waiting, this is Ed Bozak. Two things. Number one, I may be, you may see me muted, both video and audio, for time because I have something I have to attend to sometime in the next hour or so. Susan Crawford from our office has been, she was at the previous meeting. She does attend the meetings, and she would be there, and that's why she's a participant tonight. So I wanted to just note that for the record and for others who are listening or watching this. The second item is, I know that just before the meeting, I believe it was just before the meeting, we talked about members listening to the tapes or listening to the discs or whatever. Why don't we put that on the record now so that we have that clear? I don't think we did that after the meeting started. I think we did that informally. So we could take care of that. I think that's appropriate.
Great. So for the record, Miriam Salerno, who was not in attendance at the November 4th meeting, which we first heard, Miriam, did you listen to the full length of the recording and are caught up on this application?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. And Tara, purpose, the same question goes to you. You also were not in attendance on November 4th, but are you stating that you are caught up and have listened to the meeting?
I'm all caught up, and I have listened to the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for putting that on the record. Great. And Ed, thank you for letting us know if you have to step out. And thank you to Susan for stepping in as needed. That said, welcome. I see Bart, I see you are here with us. Before we proceed into the application, you heard that we are discussing February 3rd as the date to continue. Either should we somehow get disconnected this evening and/or if we have to carry the application?
Right, Madam Chair, may I begin with a request to ask if the members of the applicant's team are registered and attending this Zoom meeting with a little roll call?
Sure, I think that's fine to do.
All right, Mark Jaeger?
Mark, I have Katie Jaeger. I'm guessing that is, he is here. Do you want me to bring them all over, or do you want, are they going to be providing testimony, or?
Well, I'd like to ask them if they're available on the February 3rd date. That's all, Eileen.
Great, sure. Why don't we bring them in? If we were in person, we would just turn and ask.
Right.
Katie Jaeger, Mike Lonzo Fama, I believe.
Right.
Okay.
Stuart Johnson?
And Stuart Johnson, yeah. Let me bring him over as well.
All right, I know our traffic engineer is not logged in yet, and he will log in later as hopefully needed. So I'm assuming.
February 3rd is fine by me, Bart.
Right, that, Mark?
Mark, yep.
Okay, how about Stuart?
February 3rd works fine, Bart. Thank you.
Mike?
February 3rd is good for me as well.
All right, I'm gonna hope and pray that Craig Paragoy, the traffic engineer, is good with that. Let's assume that he is. And thank you for the, oh, one other question, Madam Chair. And it probably is one for Mr. Bozak. When the board reorganizes, if there is a change in membership, will the new members watch and/or read and be entitled to participate?
If I might, Madam Chair?
Aye.
Under the statute, new members do have the ability to rehabilitate themselves, that's what it's called in the statute, by listening to the discs or the tapes or whatever. They are not required to do so for obvious reasons. You know, in this case, we're talking about two, you know, sometimes there's five, six, seven, 10 hearings or whatever. So the statute does not require it. So all I can tell, all I can say is that we can ask the members, if we have new members, to consider listening to the discs so that they can participate and vote on the application. But if they elect not to do that for whatever reason, then we cannot compel them to do that. And we'll have to work with the board that we're left with.
Right, I'm not certain whether or not there is an anticipation of a broad change in membership, but that was a question that came up in our discussions with the applicant.
That is responsible. I can't answer that in full, not knowing the full board's composition. If you are aware of the website, it does state everybody's members' terms. There is, there are three or four members that potentially may change or potentially may not change. We also have two alternates who have been attending these hearings, so one of whom whose term carries through next year, I know. So there is certainly going to be continuity in terms of members who are hearing, so you would have.
That was the response to the question, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that said, thank you for getting the administrative out of the way, and I would welcome you to begin or pick up where you left off.
Right, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to begin with a very brief summary with regard to the status of the application. At the prior hearing on November 4th, several witnesses, or two witnesses were presented. The first was Mark Jaeger, who in his testimony stated that a fully conforming site plan application for 53 units of residential living accommodations, eight of which will be affordable units, thereby contributing to the satisfaction of the township's affordable housing obligation in an inclusive manner at a site which by its location, unique in nature, and its history of vacancy is particularly suited to receive it. As such, the application proposed a development of two to three stories with 97 parking spaces on site. Mr. Lonzo, Mr. Jaeger also raised the issue of the potential for including a generator in the plan. That was followed up by Mr. Lonzo Fama's testimony, who testified as to the particulars of the site plan, indicated a willingness to develop a plan that included greater detail on the transformers and a proposed generator, assuming that that was the applicant's intention. He was also, at the beginning of his cross-examination by Ms. Mizawi, but because the administrative reviews had not been available to her, she reserved the right to continue that examination. Mr. Lonzo Fama is here this evening to respond to the issue of the generator and the transformers, and to submit to cross-examination by Ms. Mizawi and further examination by members of the board. There have been two post-hearing supplemental filings in accordance with the requests made by members at the November 4th meeting. The first is a traffic engineering report provided by Dynamic Traffic through the agency of Craig Paragoy, a professional engineer. And Mr. Lonzo Fama filed a utility area partial plan enlargement with reference to the transformers and the generator issue, which he will testify to at the outset this evening. In addition to Mr. Lonzo Fama's wind-up on his testimony, it is proposed to present the testimony of the architect for the project, Stuart Johnson. And assuming that there is time, and nature is kind, and Mr. Paragoy, who was attending another Zoom hearing, is available, the traffic engineering testimony requested by Mr. Bear at the last hearing. There are several other items of evidence that I would like to mark at this time, Mr. Budzak, and they would be A13, the traffic engineering report, and A14, the utility plan partial enlargement. As we get further into the hearing and the testimony of Mr. Johnson has taken, he'll have additional architectural submissions that will provide colored renderings and a rooftop plan also requested at the prior hearing. I would be glad to respond to any questions that anyone might have at this time. In the absence of any, I would ask that Mr. Lonzo Fama be admitted to the platform to continue his testimony.
Thank you. Did anybody have any questions regarding what we just heard before we move into Mr. Lonzo Fama?
Can we just have the data of Mr. Lonzo Fama's partial plans for this utility area?
It, yes. It's 12:30. Ed?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, we can proceed with Mr. Lonzo Fama. Thank you. Welcome back, Mike.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Mr. Lonzo Fama, perhaps you could take the board through the utility area partial plan, indicate what changes were made. And as you do it, I would ask you to reflect on the label, proposed transformers on your plan, and understand that Mr. Johnson will, in his testimony, indicate that there is only one transformer necessary.
I will do that. This is Mike Lonzo Fama with the firm of Casey &amp; Keller. I acknowledge that I'm still under oath from the prior hearing. And what Mr. Chan is referring to is a submission we made on December 3rd with regard to the request to detail out the area alongside the building directly off of Milburn Avenue. The drawing that you see on the screen now is what Bart has identified as A14, entitled Utility Area Partial Plan Enlargement, 397 Milburn Avenue, with the latest revision date of December 3rd, 2020. And on the original submission, and what I had attested to at the prior hearing, was that we had two transformers, one located behind the other.
Could I request that you rotate this image 90 degrees?
Yeah.
Sure.
It would help, and then orient everybody would be okay. Thank you.
Mr. Lonzo Fama?
Yes.
In doing this, would it be useful to bring up A10 as well and share that, which is sheet, the colorized site plan sheet four of eight, so that the comparison can be side by side?
Sure. That was the landscape plan, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Wait a minute.
This is the colorized version of the landscape plan, which was sheet, if I can.
Four. Yeah, I think it's sheet four, and it was exhibit A10.
Okay, that was, that sheet seven. You're talking about the colorized site plan.
Right.
There we go. Okay, what I currently have on the screen is sheet, a colorized version of sheet four, the rendered site plan for the project. As you can see, Milburn Avenue is at the bottom of the sheet. The area we're talking about is the southeast corner of the project. There's a common boundary line that runs north to south. And on this exhibit, we had showed two transformers, a side entrance to the mechanical room. So this is the area that we then enlarged and modified based upon conversations with my client, who desired to have an emergency generator as part of the application. It was further determined with the assistance of the architect and the mechanical engineer for the project that only one transformer would be necessary. So now moving back to exhibit A14, this is the same orientation as you just saw. This is the common boundary line running north to south, Milburn Avenue at the base of the drawing. This is the southeast corner of the project. And you can see from this exhibit, there is a single transformer pad and transformer located immediately to the north of the mechanical room entrance. And then behind that, further to the north, is 150 kilovolt emergency generator, backup generator, that would power just key elements of the building. For example, the elevators, lighting within the common areas, as well as the garage doors, would be managed by this generator. It's not designed to carry the entire structure and all of the residential units and commercial space within the building. In response to some questions and concerns by board members, we added a six-foot-high solid screen fence along the walkway, so to further screen the generator and transformer from the street. In addition, we added some skip laurel, which is an evergreen hedge that'll be about three to four feet high, that would further soften that appearance. The remainder of the vegetation that you see in this corner is the same as what was presented at the prior hearing, which is a mixture of perennials, some hydrangea, and some grasses to soften the appearance there. The transformer will be located 10.25 feet from the property line, and the emergency generator would be located 10.83 feet from that common boundary. There is a driveway that runs alongside that existing structure. The emergency generator would be just shy of six feet from that curb line, and the transformer would be just over four feet from that line. So these are providing key elements of support to the building. Obviously, the transformers required for the electric service, emergency generator, especially on a night like this, you know, it's really become something that is required, especially for a multi-story, multifamily residential building. You want to make sure the elevators will be working even during emergency conditions. So that's what was submitted at the last hearing, and happy to answer any questions with regard to this specific submission.
Mr. Lonzo Fama, when you say there's a driveway four feet off the transformer and five or six feet for the generator, that driveway is actually an encroaching driveway on the applicant's property that the applicant has consented to permit to continue until the adjoining property experiences redevelopment, if and when that happens. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chan.
Right, I have, oh, Mr. Lonzo Fama, can you, can you speak to the sound generated by the transformers and the sound generated by the generator?
They, both devices have to meet the state standards with regard to decibel levels. I believe it's 55 dB in the evening, 65 dB during the day. They, these levels, there'll be containment with, around the emergency generator that, because the emergency generator will have to be exercised periodically to make sure that it functions when it's needed. And during those test procedures, it's enclosed in a special soundproof container that would keep the decibel levels compliant with the state standard. The transformer does not generate a significant noise level that would disturb the adjoining property.
Right, I have no further questions of the witness who would submit up to the examination of the board, members of the interested public.
Thank you. Members of the planning board, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Lonzo Fama regarding this testimony? Gaston?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Lonzo Fama, will there be any fencing or anything shielding the generator and the transformer from the north side, so where the four feet away from the driveway?
From, yeah, this is the eastern side. North is up towards the top of the sheet.
I'm sorry, yes, yes, the eastern side.
We took the fence and ran it down and slightly up, just enough to screen it from view as you, as you come, as you walk along Milburn Avenue. as you, as you come, as you walk along Melbourne Avenue. We, we need to really keep the area open for maintenance, so we were trying to avoid encumbering it too much with fencing. I could, I'd have to check with the mechanical engineer and find out if some additional fencing could be provided and still afford us the ability to properly maintain the equipment.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Aglow?
Am I unmuted?
Yeah. I think this is a very smart addition to the application. The town gets hundreds of applications for private generators and for a multifamily home. If there was a big storm, this is really very important, and I'm very glad that they've added this to their application and put up the appropriate screening and noise reduction to keep this safe and quiet as can be. So, yeah, I'm.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Lonzo Fama? Okay, we will, Mr. Lonzo Fama, if I can ask you to unshare.
Yep, I was one step ahead of you.
Sorry, I can't see that. There we go. Who may find themselves in attendee mode and not in this room, if you have a question for Mr. Lonzo Fama regarding this testimony. And I see Ms. Mazaway has a question, so we'll bring you on in. Oh, Paul Phillips, I'm sorry, I see. Why don't you ask while we're bringing her?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mike, can you tell us what the heights of the transformer and generator are?
The height of the generator, it's a Kohler powered generator. It's a hundred and fifty KV. I'm just checking the specs on it. Gives me the weight. I'm looking for the height. Doesn't appear to be on this drawing. It's not, it's not on the spec sheet that I have, but I can, I can certainly get that information. Just, I'm sorry, I have it. It's, it's sixty-six inches high.
Okay, so the, where I was coming from, I want to make sure that the fence height screened the generator. So if my math is correct, it will.
Correct.
And the transformer?
The transformer is about a similar height. I don't have the exact dimension on that. It hasn't actually been specced yet, but they're typically about five, five to five and a half feet high.
Okay, and the fuel source of the generator?
It's going to be natural gas.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Ms. Mazaway, for waiting for that question. And you can unmute yourself and just state your, who you are, and feel free to ask your question.
Great, thank you. Members of the board, good evening. Jennifer Mazaway. I'm a partner with Genova Burns. We're located at four nine four Broad Street, Newark, New Jersey. I represent an interested property owner in Melbourne, Melbourne Courtyard Associates. And thank you again for allowing, having Mr. Lonzo Fama back this evening and allowing me the opportunity to review the reports, which I did not have at the November fourth meeting. I do have some questions, and some of this will relate to the testimony he gave back in November to Mr. Lonzo Fama, so I apologize for that, but just looking through the plan, could you explain the two different lobbies that are proposed for the project?
There, let me go back to the, just plan here for a minute. There, the two lobbies that exist, there's the primary lobby, which is located at the intersection of Douglas Street and Melbourne Avenue. There is a second lobby that exists at the intersection of Spring and Essex, which is referred to as the residential lobby. We placed a second lobby there. There's a grade differential between the streets. We felt that it would make for easier access to the train station for residents to exit via that lobby. It's a simple walk down Essex Street to the train station.
Do the lobbies have different amenities available? Like, would you be able to pick up your mail in, in either? Or are they based on which apartment you're in, or anything like that?
I, I would defer to the architect for that question.
Okay, okay. On the corner, excuse me, on Essex Street, near the refuse area, you have, I believe, as indicated, is a drop-off space. Is that, is that space in the public right-of-way, or is that within the property line?
No, it's within the public right-of-way.
Okay, and the, isn't it not, is it not true that the ordinance requires an off-street loading space for a use such as this?
I, I'd have to check the ordinance for the terminology. What we provided for was an area for which people can move in or move out. It's basically on-street parking. There's a power, a single parallel space there for a conventional passenger vehicle. And then there's some additional space for a larger vehicle, such as a UPS-type truck, or mail delivery, or possibly a U-Haul-type truck for moving in and moving out.
But currently, no parking is permitted there, correct?
That's correct. That's why we have the notch in the, in the roadway there, so it doesn't impede the, the traffic movements on Essex Street.
But are there loading areas within the parking for either residents or even a commercial?
No, there's, there's no parking in, within the garage area, for example.
Okay.
No loading, excuse me, no loading in the garage area.
Yeah, and by loading, we're talking about a moving truck, for instance, for a resident, or a UPS, FedEx, things like that, that would deliver packages, right?
That's correct.
With regard to the garbage, I, I believe you testified in November that there's a refuse room, but that that room will actually open out onto the street. The garbage will actually be taken from the street. Is that correct?
Be taken from the room to the refuse truck.
Oh, okay, so does the, does the refuse ever stay, wait, or stand on the sidewalk or on the street, being wa, waiting to be taken?
We don't anticipate doing that. Now, we're going to coordinate with the maintenance staff, or coordinate with the refuse hauler, and they, they will be able to access the room, pull the, pull the, the carriers out and place them in the truck, and then put them back into the room.
Is the room open to the residents? Or are they putting their trash somewhere else, and that's being then taken to the refuse?
I believe there is a chute system where residents will, will drop their, their refuse at the floor into a refuse room that would then carry down to compacters located at the ground-floor refuse room.
And how, how much garbage, if you will, can that room hold before it would have to be emptied?
I would defer that to the architect.
With regard to the parking garage, how deep are the driveways leading into and out of the parking garage?
I, I don't know what you mean by deep.
At what point does either a resident or someone going to the commercial area have to have the, I believe you, I believe you indicated that it had, that the garage is controlled by a, a door that's going to come up, a roll-up door? So how far or how deep is the drive to get to that roll-up door? How many cars can fit in the drive aisle leading to that roll-up door?
The one off of Spring Street is deep enough for a car, a single car, to, to position itself in front of the door. And a similar condition exists for the garage door from Melbourne Avenue.
Okay, and this may be a question that's better suited for the traffic engineer, but so if one car were waiting to enter the garage, the next resident or car would then be on Melbourne Avenue? Or there is enough room to fit both of those cars?
No, just one car. But the, remember that the gates act, are activated by the motorists as they approach. The gate will be up. They'll be able to move right in. There shouldn't be a delay.
Um, you testified that there were four parking spaces within the garage that were for the commercial space. But I believe you testified that they were only for the employees of the commercial tenant. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So where will the, where will the patrons of the commercial tenant park?
On the street or in municipal lots in the area.
So, the, if the ordinance requires three parking spaces for the commercial space, it sounds to me like, like developer here is providing zero spaces for that commercial space because the actual users of that commercial space won't be able to use it. Is that, is that accurate?
I don't believe so. I, I think we, we, we meet the ordinance based upon that, the fact that we were to provide three parking spaces for the retail space. Whether or not that's strictly employees, most likely it would be, because remember, access to the garage is restricted to either residents or the employees of the retail space. There is no way a customer would be able to get to that space. And I don't think that was the intent of the ordinance, to provide for customer parking in the garage. Remember, you have a significant amount of on-street parking available along Melbourne Avenue and within municipal lots. I believe I had an exhibit that showed much of that at the last hearing.
Yes, you did show an exhibit, but here you're actually changing the use from one that provided parking onsite for its customers and its employees to one that's no longer doing that. So you are, in fact, taking spots on the street that were not, currently are not being used. With regard to the transformer location, I think there were a couple of questions about this on the screening. But with regard to the four feet off of the driveway, and I recognize that's an, that's an encroachment, and you indicated that that was a, a use that, that, that was encroaching on the property. Is, is four feet a typical? Is that, is that a safe setback from, from the drive, from the driveway there?
Yes.
And is that transformer location been approved by JCP and L?
Not as of yet, no.
Was there any consideration of putting the transformer in the building, in a vault room, for instance?
You'd have to take that up with the architect and the mechanical engineer.
With regard to the increase in sewer use, you testified at the last hearing. When does the TWA application, when does that actually usually occur? Has it occurred now with regard, as you're seeking approvals, or is that something down the line?
That's something down the line. You have to have at least preliminary site plan approval before you could apply to the DEP for a TWA. In addition, we, we have to apply to the joint meeting for their certification as well, for treatment. And none of that can occur until we have preliminary planning board approval.
Do you know today whether there is sufficient capacity to handle that, though?
Yes.
And is there?
Yes, there is.
Okay, thank you. And water as well?
Water as well, yes.
And then, has an application been made to the county planning board yet?
No, not as of yet.
The last question I have relates to the, or maybe set of questions, I guess depends on your answer, relates to that site triangle at the corner of Douglas and Melbourne Avenue. And I think it was even, it may have been in the engineer, in the township's engineer report, related to excuse me, I'm sorry, give me one second.
We can make this the final question for this witness?
Yes, I, I have, this is my final set of questions, I guess. As I mentioned, it may depend on, on, on Mr. Lonzo Fama's answer, but my question relates to the movement of traffic from Doug, from Douglas onto Melbourne Avenue and that site triangle. Because there are spot parking spaces on the street that exist today. And I, I'm sorry, now I'm trying to find where it may have been in here.
There's item two point nine on page four of Ms. Aglow.
Yes, thank you, thank you for that. Yes, I, I wanted to ask about this as well, so were, were we able to determine whether or not this is an, this creates an obstruction to the vision when exiting the garage? And, and second part to that is my concern about coming onto Melbourne Avenue to actually enter the garage, and whether the parallel parking spaces that are there will cause an issue, will cause an issue with that site triangle.
It's not going to cause an issue for motorists making the turn from Douglas onto Melbourne Avenue. The way the traffic patterns are stri, the roadway is striped, and the track, traffic patterns are set up, the vehicles make a wide turn and come down pretty much the center of the roadway. As far as turning movements into the garage from Melbourne Avenue, again, they, they would not be a barrier. Where they come into play is the possibility, as a vehicle egresses from the parking garage, we, we notch the garage back from the street. So a motorist could come out to the, to the edge of the sidewalk, so still allowing for pedestrian movement through that area. And he can look to his right and clearly see traffic coming around the bend. So in, in my mind, I think that it's going to be adequate sight distance there. If the board feels otherwise, or the municipal engineer feels otherwise, perhaps those two space, I think there's two in that location. One could be removed, perhaps, to improve the sightline to a greater degree, but I really don't think it's going to be an issue. Because as I said, the motorist, as he's sitting in his vehicle, is beyond the edge of the building. He's not projecting into the sidewalk yet. At the same time, he can see motorists making that turn around Douglas into Melbourne Avenue.
Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question related to this? I just, it may bring us full circle on this one item. As this is, I believe, a county road, is there some jurisdiction that they would have regarding this specific item?
They, they might have something to say about this as well. It is a county road, I believe, in that area. We, we will submit to them. Typically, the county does not like to take applications until they've had a municipal.
Right, right. But they would have some say potentially. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure, Ms. Mazaway, you knew that, yeah.
Thank you. I have one final question, though. I apologize. I thought the last would be my final, but Mr. Lonzo Fama, you testified that, I believe you testified, they're going to be, they're, you're proposing a removal of eleven angled parking spaces on, is it Spring? On Spring Street. Has township committee undertaken, to your knowledge, has, have they undertaken either a review of that, or the, the the process of, of removing those spaces or changing those spaces?
I, I don't think they've acted on that at all yet.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
May I put one final question to the applicant, to the engineer with regard to a filing of the application with the Essex County Planning Board?
Please, yes.
Yeah, Mr. Lonzo Fama, if I direct your attention to a transmittal of September twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty, to the Essex County Planning Board, which included their form and copies in four parts of the application, the engineering plans, the architectural plans, the stormwater management report, and the environmental assessment statement, with that refresh your recollection and encourage you to adjust your answer to Ms. Mazaway's question as to whether or not an application had been filed with the county.
Okay, I didn't recall that, but I know the county won't act until the township does. They've dated for action until, until the township approves or denies.
And the county fee of four thousand two hundred and thirty dollars was paid by the applicant, for the record. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. And thank you, Ms. Mazaway, for the questions. If anybody else from, who's the public, has questions for Mr. Lonzo Fama, now appropriate time to raise your hand and indicate, and we could bring you in if you have questions. Okay. Seeing none, I believe we will turn to, back, I will give back to counsel for the applicant, if you would like to move on to your next.
All right, the, the next, next witness to testify for the applicant, Madam Chair, is the architect. All right, the, the next, next witness to testify for the applicant, Madam Chair, is the architect, Mr. Stuart Johnson. And I will ask the Chair to admit to the platform to be sworn and introduced for that purpose, Stuart Johnson.
Thank you, and Eric, go ahead.
Where is he? Okay, Mr. Johnson, if you just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, the whole truth, and the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please just state your name for the record.
Sure. So my name for the record is Stuart Johnson, S.T.U.A.R.T., last name Johnson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Johnson, are you a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am. I'm a registered architect in, in New Jersey with a current New Jersey license.
And where do you practice architecture?
I practice architecture at Minnewosco Architects and Planners. I have a principal at Minnewosco Architects and Planners.
And how long have you been practicing architecture?
Practicing architecture for over 15 years.
And have you qualified before any of the courts of the state of New Jersey or other municipalities as an expert witness in the field of architecture?
Yes, I have. I've appeared before over 20, in front of planning boards and zoning boards in over 20 municipalities across the state. I've also qualified as an expert in architecture with the Superior Court in Bergen County here in New Jersey.
All right, Madam Chair, I would submit this witness to voir dire at this time without exploring the witness's qualifications with respect to his education, orthoreal experience, and memberships and associations.
Thank you. Given the testimony, we will hear you as a licensed architect. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
All right, Mr. Mr. Johnson, what steps did you take to prepare yourself for the commission that you received from Beehive LLC with respect to the property in question?
Sure, I'm just going to bring up my screen here. So Mr. Sheen, thank you. So again, Stuart Johnson, so I am the project architect who developed the concept, architectural drawings and the architectural site plan application that was submitted to this board associated with this application. I oversaw the development of the drawings that are being considered by the board associated with this application. I have visited the site, I'm familiar with the downtown of Milburn.
Did you also examine the ordinance applicable to this site?
I did. I thoroughly reviewed the affordable housing overlay zoning that was created for this site. And we looked at that as we designed the project to design the project as a fully compliant site plan application.
You participated in a technical review committee meeting for this site as well?
I did, yes.
Right, Madam Chair, I would establish, I would submit that the witness qualified to give expert testimony as an architect as an acceptable foundation upon which to offer that expertise at this time.
Your stand.
All right, Mr. Johnson, would you describe the property in question, recognizing that the testimony on that subject has been given by the civil engineer, Mr. Alonso Fama, as well?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So the exhibit on screen here is an aerial site plan, which is an exhibit that was previously marked into evidence, which Mr. Alonso Fama referenced during his testimony. But it represents an existing aerial site plan showing the existing condition of the site today. As previously testified to, the site was two lots that are being combined. And the site where we've created new affordable housing overlay zoning, the site's located within the downtown of Milburn. The site has frontage on Milburn Avenue to the south, Douglas Street to the west, Spring Street to the east, lastly Essex Street to the north. The site acts as a gateway into the downtown if you're traveling from west to east along Milburn Avenue. And one interesting fact associated with the site, and as Mr. Alonso Fama provided testimony to, the site is a sloping site. So the site slopes from north to south, or from Essex Street to Milburn Avenue. And the grade drop or fall is approximately 10 feet. So the site steps a full 10 feet or a full building story from north to south along Douglas Street from Essex to Milburn Avenue. So this is something that we thought about associated with the design. And I believe this was also something that was thought about in the drafting of, of the ordinance and the bulk zoning requirements associated with the site. This, the surrounding land uses are comprised of downtown commercial uses along Milburn Avenue and Spring Street. Civic uses being that of the fire station and the municipal police station to the north along Essex Street, and a few single-family homes to the west along Douglas Street. The site being within the downtown is also a short walk to the Milburn Township train station. It steps to shops and dining within the downtown. It is a great site for a mid-sized inclusionary housing development, providing new housing opportunities here within the downtown of Milburn Township.
All right, now, Mr. Johnson, a set of architectural plans has previously been marked as A8 in these proceedings. Can you authenticate those plans as the plans that were done under your architectural supervision?
They were.
Right. I apologize for interrupting. I, I believe I just heard you say a set of plans. I just want to make sure each individual graphic that we see has a number. I, Susan, I would ask you to confirm that.
And I pause for the, the prior exhibit that Mr. Johnson was just referring to, just so we make the record clear. You referred, Mr. Johnson, that was a prior exhibit by Mr. Alonso Fama. Can you confirm that that, the aerial photo to which you referenced, is that the sheet one of exhibit five, the engineering plans that were previously submitted on the exhibit list? Just so that's clear on the record that that's what you're referring to.
Yes, that is correct. So sheet one of exhibit A5.
Okay, great.
All right, so once again, once again, Mr. Johnson, can you authenticate the architectural plans consisting of a cover sheet and five plans dated September 21st, 2020, that were marked previously as exhibit eight in these proceedings as being the architectural plans that were drawn under your supervision?
Yes, they were, and we'll be presenting those this evening. The only modification is that the building plans and building elevations have been rendered in color for presentation to the board this evening.
Well, as we get to those drawings, we can mark them, assuming that council feels it's appropriate for identification moving forward. But I would ask you if you would refer to those plans and explain them for the board in the context of the RMP AH2 ordinance as applicable to the site, particularly drawing attention to the realization of the design and massing standards set out in that ordinance.
Sure, I would be happy to.
All right, do, do you want to mark the exhibits at the outset so that we don't break your train of thought?
We can mark them as we go, you know, I think that's fine.
All right, okay. So we're in your hands.
Sure, so sheet A06, which is a, which is an illustrative perspective view of the proposed development, so view looking east from Milburn Avenue. I believe, Mr. Sheen, that this was an exhibit Mr. Jaeger made reference to and has already been marked into evidence. But I will defer to you.
That would be A4, Minnewosco rendered elevation of the Milburn Avenue and Douglas Street elevation.
Correct.
All right. Please continue.
Thank you. So it's my honor to be able to present to the board and the public this evening the, the proposed project. So the proposed project here at, at 397 Milburn Avenue within Milburn Township provides for a new mixed, a new mixed-use inclusionary housing development located at the intersection of Milburn Avenue and Douglas Street that provides for a minimum of 3,000 square feet of ground floor commercial retail space along the frontage of Milburn Avenue, compliant with the design standards and the ordinance of the newly created Affordable Housing Overlay Ordinance, which provides for an activated use along the streetscape, similar to that of the comparable uses found along Milburn Avenue in the commercial, the commercial business district. So that, that's, that retail frontage along Milburn will provide storefront windows as what can be seen here in the illustrious perspective rendering, allowing for floor-to-ceiling glazing, internal lighting, and really an activated use to increase the pedestrian flow and feeling of that street. And then moving here to the corner of the building, we've divine, we've designed a unique, a champered corner of the building with a architectural slung canopy at a ground floor residential lobby that really anchors the corner of this building and provides for a true gateway statement in the architecture. Again, compliant with the design standards of the Affordable Housing Overlay Ordinance, but really anchoring this project and providing an inviting and friendly entrance for residents of this community and a focal feature of the architecture as seen looking east along Milburn Avenue for residents of the community. The project provides for two levels of residential apartment units over ground floor parking and the plus or minus 3,000 square feet of retail that I made note to. Specifically, there are 53 new residential apartment units. And the existing sloping of the site, in compliance with the ordinance, provides for a three-story massing of the project as seen from Milburn Avenue or as we see here looking east at the intersection of Milburn and Douglas. It's a three-story massing. And then as, as the site marches a full building story or climbs a full building story, moving from south to north along Douglas, it provides for a two-story massing along, along Essex Street to the north and Spring Street to the east. So again, that's more in line with the building heights and the massing scale of the architecture found along, along Essex Street. And we've designed the Douglas Street elevation to provide for brownstone stoop-style entries for the second floor units, which can be seen here along Douglas Street, which provide a human scale to the architecture and help to break up the ground floor facade. This design element also helps to screen the structured parking that has been designed on the first floor, which is behind that space. So again, compliant with the design standards, we've articulated that ground floor and screened the parking as, as seen from the streetscape or, or the public view. This illustrative perspective rendering also illustratively details and represents the proposed landscaping that's being proposed along the base of the building to soften where the streetscape meets the building, as well as to provide new street trees and decorative planters along the streetscape. This rendering also implies some of the, the, the sidewalk and hardscape improvements that are being proposed along the street and specifically at the intersection Douglas and Milburn, similar to that of other special improvement and downtown streetscape improvements that have been made further east along Milburn Avenue. So again, we think that this project here complements and really provides a bookend or a gateway to Milburn Avenue here on the western approach. And then advancing the slide, this takes us to the ground level floor plan of the proposed project.
Now, Mr. Johnson, before you leave that elevation, could you say something about the vertical and horizontal articulation as called out in the massing and design standards?
Again, Mr. Sheen, and, and I'll, I'll make a quick note to that, but I'm going to come back to that later in my testimony. But, but as shown here, the project has been designed to be broken up both vertically and horizontally in a series of bays and projections. And the articulation of the proposed project, both vertically and horizontally, as shown in the facade with, you know, this could be seen here along Douglas Street, providing townhouse portioning, and also breaking up the building horizontally, creating a base middle top reading with the manufactured cast stone veneer at the base of the building, creating a weighted base to really anchor the project. Masonry brick veneer, the reddish or pinkish masonry brick veneer that you can see at the midsection of the building. And then lastly, playing with the cornice line to create a varying roof line, in my opinion, complies with the intent of the design standards in the Affordable Housing Overlay Ordinance and provides for an attractive and handsome architecture for this proposed multifamily community.
Thank you. All right, now you want it?
Yeah, we'll mark, so I believe we said that this is page one of exhibit A8, but would you like to mark this individually?
Okay. Counsel, is that your preference?
Well, I think the entire set of architectural plans you had previously marked exhibit eight. So we could do pages like 8.1, 8.2. Sound?
I, I was going to continue in the line and, and mark it actually A16.
My mistake. I thought this was part of the architectural plans that had previously been marked.
No.
It is, well.
Well, well, it's part of the plan, but the previous plan was not colorized. This is colorized.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
All right.
New exhibit.
All right, well, we're, we're going to mark this A16. I understand that A15 is open, but to preserve my numbers, indulge me and mark this A16. What would you describe it as, please, Mr. Johnson?
Sure. So exhibit A16 is a ground level floor plan. It's consistent with page one of exhibit eight, which was previously submitted, but it's a colorized rendered version of the plan. This is the ground floor of the building. So as previously noted and testified, the project is a three-story building. It's two levels of residential apartments over ground floor parking with a three-story exposure or massing along Milburn and two stories of building height massing along Essex and Spring. So at this, at this ground floor level, at the intersection of Milburn and Douglas, we have provided for ceremonial residential lobby, which is indicated in yellow. It will have a secure key fob gate access for residents. So if you're a resident of the community and you're headed out for dining in the evening or headed out to a shop to pick something up, you can certainly utilize this entrance of the building to come and go. So it provides for secure key fob gate access. Also, at this ground floor residential lobby, we intend to provide a resident lounge area where residents of the community could congregate and meet. It would, it would provide for a Wi-Fi and workstation areas. So sort of to offer a coworking type uses for residents of the community, something that we're seeing is more and more important or more and more apparent and important, especially during this current pandemic and, and we're looking towards the future as more and more folks are working from home. And we're also had a small leasing area and management office located here within this ground floor lobby. The area indicated as blue is the retail area, which we've dashed a line that separates that. We are intending that is likely to be two retail tenants, each plus or minus 1,500 square feet, to provide for service retail to complement this building and to complement the other surrounding retail found within the downtown. That retail is approximately 40 feet in depth and provides for a minimum ceiling height of 11 to 10 feet to a finished ceiling. The ground floor plan provides for 97 structured parking spaces, as previously testified to. Specifically, 93 of those parking spaces are associated with the residential apartment community, providing for a 1.75 parking ratio internal to the building. And there are four parking spaces that would be associated with the retail and are intended for employees of the retail. And they would have access to the secure garage. The garage, as designed and previously testified to, has two points of vehicular ingress and egress. So there is a garage entrance located along Milburn Avenue here to the south. And there's also a vehicular ingress and egress access point to the garage along Spring Street. The garage doors will be secure doors. There'll be a quick action overhead roll-up type door with a architectural aluminum mesh to the door itself, which allows for air to flow through for ventilation to the garage. It also allows for eyesight. So you could look into that garage, you would see the headlights of a car if, if it were approaching. So it provides for a pedestrian safety, you know, aspect to that design. It also allows for natural ventilation to that garage. The garage itself will be fully sprinklered. Uh the garage itself will be fully sprinkler as well as the upper levels of the building. So the building will be equipped throughout with a NFPA thirteen sprinkler system. Which is above and beyond what's required by the building code. Uh and the garage will also be mechanically exhausted. Um at this ground floor level, we have also planned for. A series of private residential storage lockers uh located along the northern wall of the garage here. Which is technically below grade from the adjacent Essex Street. So that's a great amenity for residents of the community who may be downsizing, um you know, looking to sell their house, um empty nesters. Or other um young professionals uh who may be looking for additional storage space. We've also provided internal to this garage level, a secure bicycle storage area uh located along the western wall. For residents of the of the uh community who may wish to utilize that. And I believe extensive testimony was given in regards to the mechanicals for the project. Um but we have reviewed uh the electrical loading and needs for the building, given that it's two stories of residential with fifty-three units. We do only require one transformer. So I believe Mr. Lanzafama has provided testimony regarding that location of that transformer. Which is approximately ten feet by ten feet, uh I'm sorry, which is approximately eight feet by eight feet square. And approximately five and a half feet in height. Uh and then immediately adjacent to that would be a pad mounted generator. Uh providing uh life safety backup for the multifamily community. As well as allowing for uh charging stations and heating areas internal to the building and the residential lobbies in the amenity areas. Uh in the event that they lose power uh for an extended period of time like Hurricane Sandy. Or hopefully what will not happen this evening. Um and um. The transfer, uh the generator itself would be a natural gas uh generator inside a soundproof enclosure to mitigate, you know, any sound. Um and it would be a natural gas generator. So if we think that that complements the design of this building. And again, provides for a life safety opportunity, but also a safe um. Safe housing environment for residents of this future community. Uh if we advance the slide then to uh the second floor. I could actually go back, so I'm going to go back for one minute. Uh one aspect I forgot to note was internal to the parking garage. Uh we will be providing five electrical vehicle charging stations uh for residents of the community. Um with the infrastructure in place to be able to add additional electric vehicle charging stations in time. As increased, if there is increased uh resident demand and or as technology evolves and changes. So that's one of the green design elements that I'll speak to later that we're planning for for this project. I think that's a a smart design feature. Um a- as well meets one of the recommendations uh by some of the board members that we have previously heard. So advancing the project or advancing the slide here to the next sheet, which I believe then would become exhibit A seventeen, if we go in order.
That's correct.
Okay, is the proposed second floor plan of the building. This is the first level of residential. Uh the areas highlighted in orange represent the residential apartment units. The area highlighted in yellow represent the common residential corridor uh as well as lobby areas or elevator vestibule. And the pastel areas in pink and purple and shades of orange represent the residential amenities offered to this community. So this second floor of the building provides for twenty-five residential apartment units uh comprised of seven one bedrooms. Seventeen two-bedroom units and one three-bedroom unit. Uh this is also our main residential amenity floor. Um as previously noted, the site uh is a sloping site and we have designed two residential lobbies to the project. So that lower lobby. Uh the lower lobby along Milburn becomes a ceremonial lobby, providing uh internal residential amenity space for the community. Uh as well as the leasing and building management center uh that overlooks that space. And then at the intersection of Essex and Spring, we have we have designed our main residential entrance. This is also the residential uh entrance that's closest to the train station. So for folks who may be commuting into Manhattan for work um. And or, you know, headed into uh Manhattan or elsewhere or utilizing the train line for uh mass transit. Uh that offers a convenient uh a convenient access to the building. Uh that also mitigates uh traffic concerns along Milburn by locating this entrance here. Uh we've also designed a uh a dedicated drop-off area here in front of this main lobby. Which could be used by Uber and Lyft or residents of the community. Uh who may be dropping a spouse or a significant other uh at the building uh while you find parking on the public street. And then immediately in front of that, we've also provided for a loading area, uh a a hatched area. That could be used for residential move-in and loading as well as UPS or FedEx delivery to that main residential lobby. Um upon entering into that residential lobby, we would have a secure key fob access to the lobby with mailroom and package room located immediately off of that vestibule. And then coming into that lobby, we would have a well-designed um and um boutique hotel-style lobby for residents of the community. Uh there is a elevation difference between the first level of residential and that lobby. Providing for a stair with glass and aluminum railing. Uh and also that 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 elevated first floor of residential helps us to get the uh residential window sills of the apartments. Up off of grade for uh security and privacy concerns. We have uh provided for with with the loading area located here, we have provided for a dedicated residential move-in access. Uh a little further down uh the mid-elevation block of uh of Essex Street. Which provides for a very convenient access for uh folks to move into these apartment buildings. Uh you could then turn left or right on this corridor to move into your residential apartment. Or if you lived on the third floor, given that there are only two floors of residential units, uh convenient access to the elevator here uh to be able to move into the building. Um residential movements uh to the building would be a scheduled and coordinated event with uh building management. So typically, there's only one movement occurring at any given time. Typically, a moving van is out there for all of one to two hours uh during daytime hours uh off-peak uh hours. Uh and again, managed by uh building management and porters who would be there on-site during that process. We've also designed the project to have internal refuse uh trash chutes. So uh at each residential level of the building. We have provided for two trash rooms that provide for a vertical chute that terminate to a trash room at the ground floor. So the first residential trash room and recycling area is located uh along Essex Street, and then there's a secondary one. Uh that terminates at the parking garage level and also provides for a trash and holding area for the retail component uh uh below. Um the sizing of these rooms have been adequately sized to provide for trash compactors and additional two cubic yard rolling containers. As well as areas for recycling bins and cardboard and cardboard baling uh for Amazon delivery uh packages and boxes and the like. So again, adequate size for an apartment building of fifty-three units. Um trash would be a coordinated event uh picked up by private hauler. A a building of this size typically would have pickup uh one to two times a week, uh which would be a scheduled event occurring at the same time. Uh each week, uh same day and time. And that would comply with uh township ordinance in regards to hours and operation of that service. Um but that would work, uh building management would wheel those two cubic yard rolling containers and recycling uh buildings. Out to this loading area uh for that scheduled pickup, really minimizing the amount of time that 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 any of uh those bins. Would be out uh by the curbside for that operation. Uh and then moving to the residential amenities. So this main residential floor here. Provides for a uh club room for residents of the community as well as a private event room. That could be rented out uh by residents of the community in an area where they can gather for resident uh events. We've also provided for a state-of-the-art fitness center uh and adjacent yoga and stretching area. Uh each of these residential amenities uh or, you know, many of the areas internal to the building would have secure key fob access. Um for uh security and offer uh access directly to to an outdoor courtyard. Which is being designed atop the parking garage below. So the building itself is a modified L or modified U-shaped building, which is a double-loaded corridor design. Uh which provides for an open-air courtyard above the parking level below. Uh which provides for an attractive uh, you know, attractive uh um area for outdoor active and passive recreation for residents of the community. Some of the outdoor um amenities offered to the community here are outdoor grilling and dining areas, uh seating areas. Um a natural gas fire table areas uh to be able to sit outside. Yeah, again, uh designing in the current multifamily housing market, but again, looking towards the future, trying to maximize the amount of outdoor space. Smart design, we feel, to uh utilize the roof of the parking deck to provide these passive uh inactive recreation areas for residents of the community. Um another unique feature to the design here is that the ground floor apartment units uh that each front along this terrace. Would have access to a small uh eight to ten-foot-deep private terrace space uh directly from their units. Which would then be buffered from the common area uh by raised planters and um uh cedum-type uh plantings within that courtyard. Then if I advance the slide then to the next page, uh I believe then we would mark this as exhibit A eighteen. This represents the third floor of the building. Uh the third floor of the building is a is all residential use. Again, typical double-loaded corridor that generally stacks with layout of the residential units below. Uh the building has two elevators. It's a fully accessible building. Uh with the elevators extending down to the parking level and down to the two residential lobbies. Uh a generous-sized corridor for residents of the community. And this third floor of the residential provides for twenty-eight apartment units consisting of four one-bedrooms. Twenty-three two-bedrooms and one three-bedroom apartment unit. I'd like to touch a little bit here just on the total uh unit mix and breakdown for the project, just to reiterate, but uh. There are fifty-three total apartment units being proposed, uh forty-five of which are market-rate apartment units. And eight of which are affordable apartment units. Uh the specific breakdown in the unit mix is thirty-five. Two-bedroom market-rate units, ten one-bedroom market-rate units, two three-bedroom affordable units, five. I'm sorry, two three-bedroom affordable units, five two-bedroom affordable units, and one one-bedroom affordable units. Um the proposed affordable units have been uh denoted with an A in parentheses behind them throughout the building plan. Uh but you'll see that the locations of these units have been spread throughout the building. Uh and really provide for a true uh a truly um a truly inclusionary housing design. So if you're walking or driving around the apartment community or walking internal to the project, you really would not be able to tell where these units are located. They have the same access to the front door of the building, same uh front door unit access or side-by-side unit access between market versus affordable units. Um and really would have access to the same residential amenities uh for for all of the the tenants of the community. Have access to the same structured parking internal to the building. So a truly inclusionary housing design. And uh lastly, um the unit mix being provided also complies with that. As required by fair share housing in regards to the breakdown of affordable three, two, and one-bedroom units. And uh the proposed uh project as it relates to the affordable units would also be designed to comply with the threshold. Associated with the low-income, moderate-income, and very-low-income units as required. And then if we advance the slide here, then I believe this would be sheet or exhibit A eighteen?
Nineteen.
A nineteen. So exhibit A nineteen uh is a proposed roof plan. I believe the review memo, uh perhaps the planning review memo.
Yeah, Mr. Johnson, yes, let me stop you for a second. And again, I ask for your indulgence. If we could mark that, Madam Chair, as. A fifteen, then we will have closed all of the gaps between one and eighteen.
Sure.
So the rooftop plan is A fifteen. Thank you.
Sure, understood. So the roof plan of the proposed development, exhibit A fifteen. Uh we were asked to provide a roof plan and provide testimony regarding the design of that roof plan. Some of the mechanical uh units being designed on that roof. Uh so as shown here, uh and as seen in the in the illustrative perspective renderings. Uh the design of the roof is a flat roof design. Uh we have designed the roof uh which has a varying roof line and cornice line. Uh providing a varying uh parapet which ranges between twelve and twenty-four inches in height along the exterior facade. Uh we have designed this flat roof and the mechanical systems for the units that uh the. Residential apartments are heated and cooled uh utilizing an aquatherm system. Which is a split system-type unit which which allows for the uh the condensing units to be located on the roof. So we have schematically located uh where the uh forty-two-inch-high condensing units would be located. So we have fifty-three apartment units. We would have fifty-three condensing units associated with each of those apartment units. As well as a handful of additional units associated with the retail and the common amenity spaces. So they can be uh seen here as they're called out uh along the above the center corridor of the project. Uh those forty-two-inch-high condensing units are set back greater than ten feet uh from the roof edge. It would not be uh perceived. From the pedestrian scale or street level as you were walking around the community. Um additionally, we have two RTU units, rooftop units for heating and cooling, uh the common amenities and common corridor spaces of the building. They are approximately ninety-six inches in height and they are located, there's one located here and one located here. Uh efficiently designed essentially at the ends of the corridors for supply and return air to the uh residential corridors. Again, those are well set back uh from the street facades of the buildings. It would not be perceived from the streetscape. And we are also providing one stair tower access to the roof. So there's one stair tower that we're bringing up to the roof. The other two stair towers would provide for a roof hatch. Uh but allowing for that one stair tower, which is well set back from the uh primary street facades and again. Uh would not be visible from grade level, allows for uh maintenance access to the roof. Uh it also allows for access for any first responders who may be coming to the uh building, specifically say a fireman who has an oxygen tank on their on their back. Allows for clear access to the roof um and typically is uh well-received by those first responders. Um so I believe that concludes my testimony associated with the roof plan. And the proposed rooftop amenities, or I'm sorry, the the proposed rooftop mechanical units. The last point I'll note, uh as as shown on the exterior building elevations and compliant with the design standards. The rooftop appearances that that project pass the rooftop, i.e. the elevator overrun and the stair tower. Will be clad in a comparable fiber cement vertical panel to which is being used on the upper portions of the building immediately adjacent. So that it's a comparable exterior building material uh which should blend in in terms of color and is a quality building material. Um so just wanted to to note that.
Right now, this this, okay, you're right, right where I was going to ask you to go, Mr. Johnson.
Sure. So then I believe then uh we at. We're at A nineteen?
Well, uh have, these have already been marked and not colorized, so I think you can make reference to the sheet. Uh and they would all be part of the prior architectural plans that were marked. Am I right in that regard?
Uh I believe these may be additional, uh I I believe there was a comment we received in a planning review letter. Uh asked to provide testimony regarding the typical unit design, the market rate unit design. So I would suggest perhaps we mark this as exhibit A nineteen.
Okay.
Just to clear, just to be clear for the record, those, that's new, that's not part of exhibit eight, the architectural plans that was dated uh September twenty-first, twenty-twenty. This is a new exhibit.
Yes.
Okay.
And what, how are you going to describe it, Mr. Johnson?
Sure. So these are the typical market rate unit plans being proposed for the project. Uh so. Um we have provided one example of a market rate one-bedroom unit and two examples of market rate two-bedroom units. One uh one uh one pointer note for clarification, uh drawing number two and drawing number three, there is a typo. Uh it it states typical market rate one, but drawing number two and drawing number three on the sheet depict a typical market rate two-bedroom unit. Uh the square footages or the approximate square footages are are appropriate and accurate. So if I could begin with drawing number one, uh drawing uh number one rep- uh represents a typical inline market rate one-bedroom unit plan. Which is plus or minus eight hundred square feet. Uh the unit's approximately thirty feet deep. And allows for a generous-sized uh one-bedroom apartment unit for residents of the community. Uh large-size bathroom, providing for an en suite bathroom condition access from the master bedroom as well as the common living area. Large walk-in closet. Uh but when we get to the exterior elevations, we'll see this more. Typically, the bedrooms all have minimally two pieces of glass. The living room has three pieces of glass. Uh the the proposed ceiling heights uh at the main uh the main living areas of the residential apartment units. Are a minimum of ten feet, which allows for a head height uh for the residential exterior windows of nine feet. Uh so with the two-foot windows. So with the two foot window sill, that allows for a minimum window height of six to seven feet. And typically, the triple window in a living room is, you know, minimally nine feet wide. And typically bedrooms are minimally six feet wide, allowing for large light and air to those residential apartment units. Immediately upon entering into the kitchen area of the unit, you have direct visibility of those exterior windows and providing adequate light and glazing to the interior to the units. Then moving to drawing number two and three, we have provided a typical market rate, a two bedroom plan, which shows an inline two bedroom unit. So we can see the master bathroom condition, the second bath associated with that two bedroom unit, generous sized apartment unit, which is plus or minus 1,200 square feet and really is designed for potential empty nesters within this community as well as young professionals who may be moving west, you know, from from Manhattan or elsewhere, looking to reside here within the downtown. And then drawing number three, which is a typical two bedroom unit. This is a corner unit. This is plus or minus 1,300 square feet and allows for a eat in dining area internal to the corridor wall, which could also be construed as a den area or a home office area. Or again, an area for eat in or a formal dining area. Many of the residents who might be moving into units designed for this size, it allows them obviously to have a separate dining area from that of the living area. And one of the things that we're seeing is more and more important again in this current market is providing a home office space. That's one of the number one things that residents are looking for, especially in this current market. And as we proceed to to look forward, folks may be working from home more and more. So that's something that a den space or an alcove space along an interior wall would provide for. And lastly, while I'm on the subject, I will share that the units have been designed and sized appropriately, specifically the two bedroom units, some of the larger two bedroom units to provide for den units internal to the units. These den spaces again are intended as a home office space, a media space, an area for a home workout space to put a Peloton bike. Typically, they're designed internal to the unit, not necessarily along an exterior wall. It typically don't have a door accessing them and often don't have a closet. So they're not intended as a bedroom use, and that's not the way that they've been designed. And that's not what we're proposing. So I just wanted to share that with the board and the public that some of these units will be designed to provide den units that we feel meets the market based on the proposed square footages and the unit mix being provided and also responds to current multifamily market conditions. Then, so that that brings us back to Mr. Sheen or the board secretary, maybe you can help me, but this was
A4.
A4. A4, which which I previously made note to. So I wanted to come back to the exterior building facade and talk a little bit about the design of the building. So the design of the proposed facade provides for a transition, a transitional design that mimics some of the more traditional detailing that can be found with some of the existing buildings located along Milburn Avenue within the downtown, provides for a well articulated and well proportioned facade expressing vertical masonry brick piers along both Milburn Avenue and Douglas Street. The, the, the exterior facades have been designed to provide for a human scale along the streetscape, which can be seen in the architectural storefront windows that I noted along Milburn Avenue at the retail, wrapping around the corner to the ceremonial residential lobby. The architectural slung canopy above that lobby, creating a statement and a covered entry and the brownstone stoop style entries running parallel to the building and extending out to the street to screen and mitigate blank wall impact, but screen the parking beyond and also provide access to the residential apartments via immediately above. The facade has been designed, as previously noted, to be broken up into a series of vertical elements as well as break the massing horizontally. So the proposed exterior building materials consist of a manufactured cast stone being used at the base of the building, coming up two stories at the residential entrance here. We also see that manufactured cast stone at the entrance lobby and along the Essex Street and Spring Street elevations and a masonry brick veneer, which is a reddish pink color with a flash providing a range to that. And precast, precast corbeling and lintels at some of the heads of the winter of of the windows and providing precast banding to further delineate and break up the facade. And a fiber cement vertical panel being used at the upper portions of the building, where the three story townhouse proportioning or three story vertical masonry proportioning is broken to create a little bit of relief along that facade and and to provide a contemporary architectural detailing to the project and to assist with that varied cornice line that I noted previously. Compliant with the design standards of the Affordable Housing Ordinance, we have designed specifically the Douglas Street facade to provide for three story readings here where these bays have been designed to be taller than they are wide. And then as we transition, I'm going to move to the next slide here, which I believe we would mark as exhibit A20?
Yes.
Moving in order. So exhibit A20 is an illustrative perspective rendering view looking west from Essex Street. Specifically, it's very close to the intersection of Essex and Spring. It showcases the main residential lobby that I noted previously here at the corner. You can see the two story amassing and reading to the proposed project. And the scale of the bays along this street have been designed to be wider than they are taller, which is more in line with the civic scale of the municipal buildings found adjacent to this project on the northern side of 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 Essex Street there. And the, as you can see here along Essex Street and Spring Street, we propose to continue the same rich and quality building materials consisting of that manufactured cast stone, the masonry brick veneer, the fiber cement vertical panel being used at the upper portions of the building, the storefront aluminum architectural windows being used at the lobby and the amenity spaces and the aluminum clad wood windows being proposed at the upper residential floors of the building. As previously noted, you can see that the first level of residential is elevated from that of the streetscape, which allows us to create security and privacy for those units, increases the marketability, but also then allows us to have that continuous planter detail that was designed on Douglas to wrap the corner and extend further east along Spring Street. You can also see in this illustrative perspective rendering where we propose that Uber lift slash drop off area immediately adjacent, conveniently designed adjacent to that lobby entrance and the striped loading area beyond, and also the creation of one new on street parallel parking space. And lastly, the design of the street corner here. I believe that this is a much deserved improvement to the existing condition that's there today to increase the pedestrian sense or scale and safety and also the pedestrian use or friendliness of this site and really completing the block to allow for, you know, a connective flow from Milburn Avenue up to Douglas, East on Essex and back down Spring to Main Street and provides for an attractive entrance to the proposed project. So I will note, I, I believe Mr. Lanzafama had testified, but I will note that the proposed building height complies with the zoning ordinance. So the proposed project provides for a building height of 39 feet, two inches, where 40 feet is permitted. Additionally, the zoning ordinance states that no point of the building shall be five feet taller than the proposed ordinance, which would be 45 feet. And again, we comply with that. I previously noted that the rooftop mechanical units, the condensing units, which are about 42 inches in height, the two RTU units, which are 96 inches in height and the stair tower would not be seen from the streetscape along the pedestrian scale. So again, these illustrative perspective renderings are accurate in that regards where you would not perceive those based on their proposed locations at the rooftop level. I believe I provided testimony that the minimum ceiling heights at the residential apartment units are nine to 10 feet and that all of the apartment units would be conditioned with a mini split aquatherm type system with condensers on the roof. That allows us to have a clean and attractive facade and minimize through wall penetration along those streetscape facade areas. And with that, I would like then to move to exhibit, we'll mark this exhibit 21. And this is a sheet A04 of the submitted architectural building sets. This is, this represents the proposed billing elevation. So these are the 2D flat elevations. I'd just like to provide a brief testimony in regards to the proposed signage for the project. So if I could draw your attention to detail number three, the typical residential signage detail. We are proposing two residential entry canopy signs for the project, one at each residential lobby, which are designed as individual cut, channel cut, painted aluminum letters. That would be LED halo lit, so they're shielded, which would have the, the, the name and branding of the residential community. And those would comply with the sign ordinance in the Affordable Housing Overlay Ordinance. It would be less than 30 square feet. And additionally, we also are providing two retail or commercial retail signs for the proposed Milburn Avenue facade. The detail number four here is illustrative only. We propose that those two commercial signs that are being proposed will comply with the B4 zoning district regulations as noted in the Affordable Housing Ordinance.
All right, Mr. Mr. Johnson, a most comprehensive presentation. I ask you, before you are exposed to the examination of the board members, members of the public, whether there is anything that you feel should be added to the testimony that Mr. Lanzafama advanced regarding the transformer and the generator as proposed.
None at this time, but I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have and or in or the public. I do have one last point that I would like to get on the record in regards to the green design elements being proposed for the project.
Yeah, I, I apologize. I forgot that.
It's fine. So, so lastly, this concludes my testimony, but so this brings us back to again, the proposed perspective rendering here. But I'd like to speak a little bit about the green design elements being planned for and proposed for the project. So specifically, the project will provide for Energy Star appliances. It'll provide for Energy Star lighting fixtures throughout the development. We'll have auto off light sensors within the parking garage that ramp down lighting to 50% levels when they don't sense occupancy or after hours, evening hours. Same thing for residential corridors and stair towers. All of the windows as shown will have low E coating for the residential windows and the storefront retail. The apartment units each have low flow fixtures, programmable thermostats, which are easy to use for residents of the community, smart designs. And I think I previously noted the minimum five electrical vehicle charging stations that'll be provided at the garage level with the infrastructure in place to add additional in time. Lastly, two points I would like to note, which I believe really sets this project apart from many multifamily projects. But the applicant has, has worked with myself as the, as the project architect and this is the sustainability director within my office. But we are designing the project to meet all of the certifications associated with a LEED Silver Certification. So it's the intent that the project will be designed to comply with the requisite requirements associated with a LEED Silver Certification as well as the Energy Star Certification that goes along with that. So these are two certifications that I think are really smart and plan for the future and will be very desirable by future residents of this community as we look towards the future. So again, we think that that's great, that the project's being designed to meet all those requirements. And it's the applicant's intent upon receiving final CO and the commissioning process that we would obtain those certifications for this proposed development. I believe that concludes my direct testimony, or at least my presentation.
All right. No, no further questions of this witness, Madam Chair, and would submit him to questions from the board, members of the interested public.
Thank you. And before we do that, can I just ask if there are any of the professional reports that Mr. Johnson was going to further address unless you've already incorporated all of those responses? I just want to make sure how we want to handle that.
I think everything that he has testified to is reflected in evidence.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you know, Mr. Bear, I see your hand.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, thank you very much for a very comprehensive testimony. I appreciate that. Could you go back to, I believe, exhibit A16 for a second? Please, very, very quick sec question.
A16, can you help me out with?
I'll tell you what, did put up any, any exhibit that shows that we can focus on the driveway entrance off of Milburn Avenue. So whatever exhibit I thought 16.
Yeah. So why don't we look at the ground floor plan?
I think this was 61. This one, this will be fine. Okay. So I had a question at the last meeting of Mr. Laza Fama, who testified that he did not know what the distance was from the door out to to the sidewalk and what that space was that would accommodate a car. Today, he said it would accommodate a car. So, so I'm asking you today if you could either confirm, deny, correct or agree with the previous testimony that Mr. Laza Fama gave. If you could give us the, the information about the driveway in terms of square feet, I would appreciate it. And so we can understand exactly what that space can accommodate.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So the minimum clear width from curb to building face is approximately 17 feet. And specifically at the garage door entrances, as Mr. Lanza Fama had had noted, the facade is articulated there and actually recessed and we've recessed that first floor. We've, we've recessed that by approximately 24 inches to create a shadow line where those garage doors are located to mitigate, you know, visual, you know, the visual impact of those doors. So from the garage door to the curb along Milburn Avenue, we have approximately greater than 19 feet. And just for a little bit of reference, the standard parking spaces internal to the garage are all nine by 18. That complies with RSIS design standards. Compact parking spaces are often 16 feet in depth. So I believe where you may be going with this, and Mr. Lanza Fama provided testimony is that upon exiting that garage, you would have the opportunity to to inch out or pull out and obviously be able to clear your sight lines and look at oncoming traffic prior to making that what I believe is a left hand turn out of the parking garage.
Actually, Mr. Johnson, I'm more interested in the, in, in a car entering the garage. And then when that car is sitting at that door, how much space would then be available for pedestrian circulation? So I'm assuming a car typically is about 10 feet long and you testified there was 19 feet there. So it's somewhere between seven and eight clear feet. Am I correct?
Yeah, that's correct. I believe that math sounds correct. And, and I would agree with that. And one point to note is that these are quick action overhead doors. So residents of the community would have a sticker on their windshield. It's kind of like an easy pass type technology. And upon pulling up to that garage door, that garage door, it's a quick action overhead roll up door that is a few seconds operation. And then usually, you know, usually a car is able to proceed. It actually doesn't come to a full stop. You're able to proceed directly into that garage.
Okay, so a few seconds to, actually, my next question was, how long does it take for that door then to operate, come up so a car can enter into the garage? Do you know how long that takes? That's, it's important.
Yeah, you know, we could come back to you with the specifications on that. But, but again, it's a very, it's a quick action overhead roll up door. So, you know, approximately 10 seconds or so.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Mr. Steinberg?
I would like to pursue the same general area that Dan Bear just did. That garage door has two aisles, is that correct?
Well, so there are two garage doors, there are two individual garage doors providing ingress and egress, vehicular ingress and egress. The, the drive aisle beyond is minimally 24 feet in width, allowing for two way traffic. The, the drive aisle beyond is minimally 24 feet in width, allowing for two-way traffic. But there's two separate doors for, for ingress and egress.
Two separate doors.
Right. One for entering, one for exiting.
You happen to know what the distance is between the entrance to the garage furthest to the west and the intersection of Melbourne Avenue with the street that intersects it at the, at the main entrance to the project?
So I believe this building elevation is approximately 134 and a half feet in length. So if I were to shift that down to this intersection here, it appears that it's approximately 135 feet in linear length. You know, specific, specific questionings as relates to traffic or queuing time or distance there, I would likely defer to our civil engineer, our traffic engineer to follow. Does that answer your question?
Yes, well, the ordinance provides it has to be a minimum of 100 feet.
Right, so, so it's greater than 100 feet and complies with the ordinance is my understanding.
But I think the other questions I have are more directed to the traffic engineer. But I do have one other series of questions that relate to the cutout on Essex Street that you testified to and that Mike Lanza Fama testified to. Do I understand from Mike Lanza Fama's testimony and yours that that cutout is now part of the municipal street? It's not part of the property?
Well, my understanding from Mr. Lanza Fama's testimony was that, that that's technically within the right-of-way?
So that is, in order for that to be used in the manner testified to by Mr. Lanza Fama and by yourself, the municipal governing body would have to take some action?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Sheen or, or Mr. Lanza Fama in regards to that line of questioning.
Do you, have you given any consideration to what the signage would look like, look like with respect to that proposed cutout? There would have to be a sign there, correct?
There would be, there would likely be a sign there, and it would comply with the signage ordinance, you know, of the downtown in regards to wayfinding signage, you know, and a parking sign.
Well, I'm a delivery driver and I'm driving up Essex Street. I have a package that I want to deliver to somebody in that project. And my understanding of all the testimony so far is that that cutout, if permitted, in the right-of-way would be used for multiple purposes, including and loading and unloading for entrance to people into the project or leaving the project. So that there, and I thought the testimony was that the management of the project would designate certain hours and days when that could be used for that purpose. I'm a delivery driver and I have to know whether or not I can pull in to that cutout space or not. So the sign would have to tell me when I could do that. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct. So, so there would be signage indicating that, 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 that is, you know, not a parking area as intended. It would be striped and marked and signed as a loading area. And again, I believe the testimony was that residential move-ins would occur there as well as a refuse pickup. That's a scheduled and coordinated event. So those vehicles are there for a limited period of time. That's managed by building maintenance and management there on site when that operation is occurring. The other uses.
My, my point is, and I, and I'm asking if you agree with this, that when that sign, when it tells the delivery people that there are certain times of the day and certain days of the week when that space is not available because of garbage pickup, because it has been reserved for move-in, move-out, all of that is going to have to be on the sign. Is that correct?
I believe much of that will be, but you know, the loading area, again, the, the refuse pickup is a scheduled event that is typically in morning hours that would not interfere with move-in. You would never have refuse and move-in occurring at the same time. And the other type of deliveries that you might receive to a multifamily community like this are, you know, Amazon and FedEx and Fresh Direct and those type of uses, that's a short-term delivery operation. And I believe our traffic.
Drivers need to know when that space is available for them, correct?
Sure, I, I, I believe it, again, it would be signed that it's available during business operation hours, compliant with other type loading or parking space use within the downtown.
I have no further questions at this time.
Great, thanks, Joe. Other questions for the architect? Mark Mattel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, Mr. Johnson, I'm really very pleased with your presentation. I thought it was terrific, and I was really elated to hear that with all the elements that you're putting in that, that will, it will achieve a LEED Silver status. And I would encourage you to up the ante a bit, because I think given your proximity to the train station, you could probably qualify for a LEED Gold or LEED Silver mix. And I think that would be, that would be terrific, and I think that adds luster. You should also take a look at, you know, Biden's Affordable Housing Plan as well as his Green Plan. There's something like $640 billion over 10 years, including $20 billion for, into the Housing Trust Fund that, you know, you would be eligible for, you know, applying for some of those funds. And I don't know what your timing is, but, and for, and for our own edification, there's 300 million in grant incentive. So if we can come up with an ordinance, you know, both Tara and Diane working perhaps, looking at LEED status with certain thresholds. There's a lot of grant money in the, in the upcoming budget. I would just encourage you to, if possible, to incorporate a little more in the, in the way of green infrastructure, perhaps a bio swell, a permeable paver, permeable pavers to try to capture as much stormwater as you can. And I don't know if you've looked at that, but, and I don't even recall what the stormwater calculus is. I, I know what the calculus is, but I don't know what the infiltration rates that you're engineering. And that would be a question, I guess, from Mr. Lanza Fama. And that's pretty much all I have, but just great presentation.
Thank you very much. And, and, you know, we appreciate the recommendations and thoughts and certainly things that the applicant can consider. I know that, that there are a lot of grants and opportunities associated with multifamily housing and green design, and that's changing daily as we, you know, design for the future. So I think the LEED Silver certification is, is, is a very well-suited and thought-about use or certification, green design certification for the project and the use. And certainly, the applicant can consider in time as the project develops and as we score the project with our sustainability expert, you know, the opportunity of how we're actually scoring that, which, which point structures were, you know, how, how, how we go about that. So I appreciate the comments and recommendations.
Great, thank you. Mr. Glow?
Oh, hi. I'm, I'm just curious, if there's 97 parking spots, are they assigned? How would the electric charging spots be delineated? And would they have to be paid for, or would that be paid for by common electric grid?
Right, so I believe there are two questions there, is that the first question was the residential apartment spaces. For, for a project of this size, the spaces would not be assigned. The residential units would have the opportunity to hunt for their spaces. They would be signed as such, so the, the four retail spaces would be located immediately upon entering into the garage, and they would be signed as such with their hours and their use. The remainder of the spaces, again, each resident will have a tag that'll be monitored by building management in terms of their use. The five electrical vehicle charging stations, they will be available to residents of the community. So they are not assigned per se. I have a Tesla or I have a hybrid vehicle and I need a charge. I may have charged at work. I don't need a charge when I get home. You know, it, it sort of ebbs and flows, the need of use. And there are newer systems out there to allow for building management to be able to monitor who's using that. So if you were to use that space and you had a 10-hour charge and I had a one-hour charge, there's a way to be able to assign that, that use with residents of the community. So that's technology that would be designed and put in place and again, monitored by the management community.
Okay, and I have one other question. I believe it was their A4, A8, the picture of the Melbourne Avenue and Douglas elevation with the triangle?
Yes.
So it's a beautiful rendering. I'm just curious, are you doing any changes to that triangle, or is that the existing size and shape as it exists now?
Yeah, so as shown here in the rendering, that matches the scale, the proportioning, the location and the size of what's there today, as well as an illustrative representation of what is there today. So I believe that there have been upgrades made within the past few years. There are ornamental grasses planted there. I believe that's on purpose to keep visibility down. I, I believe that there is a stop sign, perhaps located within that island that's not being illustratively shown here. So I guess to answer your question, we're not proposing any off-street improvements associated with that. And that's sort of outside the jurisdiction or the purview of this application.
Yeah, I just. Actual size.
I think I lost some of that, but I think I heard you asking, is that the, that is the approximate size of that island? Granted, it's in the foreground, so the aperture of the image, it may appear a little elongated, but that is the accurate representation of the size and condition.
Thank you. It's a beautiful diagram. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Johnson, I see a couple more questions. I see Jorge has one. Just as you continue to give your answers, you've used the word "community" a few times. I feel like interchangeably between residents and maybe like the Melbourne community at large. So if you could just strive to be specific when, when you use that term "community."
Right, I'd be happy to.
Okay, and so Jorge, I'll call on you.
Hey, thank you. So you already mentioned many points for the green building. I have one more question about green infrastructure. Actually, you know, what checklist, the sustainable checklist that we have for planning board, one of the questions is about rooftop. So how is going to be the roofing material? So this building doesn't contribute to the heat island effect? So what is the design for that roofing?
The, the roof itself would be an EPDM roof. Not necessarily a white roof, but, you know, typically that's a cool-tone EPDM roof, which is standard for multifamily construction type like this, which does mitigate, you know, which does begin to mitigate a heat island effect and is, is a significant improvement from the existing site condition today, which is approximately not 100% imperious coverage, but substantially much more asphalt surface parking and, and so I think the condition of the proposed project with the rooftop design and, you know, as well as the ground floor landscape is a significant improvement from the existing condition today.
And I have another question now about the driveway or along the road. Can you put back the, the site plan or, yeah, the site plan, yes, this one, actually. So my, my question here is, I really appreciate that you have two returns here, because we are trying to do a more walkable city and more vibrant city. So I think that to have two returns there is great. Now, my question is specific, we have two returns there, then we have the driveway, and then we have all that mechanical room. Don't you, or do you think that that parking, that driveway will interfere on the pedestrian safety? Because people are going to be walking from those returns to other returns, because as you mentioned also, you said this is easy to head, which we appreciate, a pedestrian town. So what's your thought about that?
Sure, so the existing use today, the Wells Fargo Bank, a commercial bank and surface parking lot, has a curb cut in that location. So the existing use, as, as shown today, has a curb cut there. The two adjacent, commercial uses adjacent to us have curb cuts and commercial driveways that seem to operate every day. Obviously, this is a downtown situation, downtown streetscape. I think the project as design provides for much safer conditions than the present condition there today or the adjacent uses that are found or the adjacent commercial driveways. Again, as we noted, the distance between curb to door is approximately 19 feet. We're providing for a quick action overhead roll-up door, one way in, one way out. That way, you know, less chance of, of interference between vehicles. Additionally, as an additional safety feature, we would provide adjacent to the garage door a, a, a indicator light and enunciator, which would be a small orange light that would flash and make an enunciation when that garage door is in operation or when it senses a vehicle internal to the garage approaching that door prior to an opening, which would make pedestrians on the streetscape aware of that movement. And then lastly, the design specification associated with the garage door being an architectural mesh screen means that it's open. So it allows airflow, it allows visual sight. So you would see the headlights, the daytime running lights, the headlights of a car. Perhaps if you were, if you did not adhere the non-iator, you would visually be able to see or hear the car approaching. So I think with all those design features and site features noted, provides for inadequate downtown streetscape and, and garage apron and vehicular access point to a multifamily or commercial development comparable to this.
Okay, last question, which is also about pedestrian safety, but it's specifically during construction. So how are you planning to make people walk along this sidewalk during construction and be safe?
Sure, so that's a great comment, and, you know, we take that into consideration with any project. And that would be subject to construction permit. We would have to first submit a demolition plan. That would be subject to the review of the construction subcode official. I believe we would have to, along with the building permit, we would have to submit a construction. The general contractor, once awarded, would have to submit a construction phasing plan, which would indicate what you're suggesting, a temporary walkway along the street, fencing, safety fencing, screening, all of those things, even if for a period of time, there needs to be a sidewalk out into the road for a few days or a week or something. That would all have to comply with township ordinance, and a full plan would be submitted by the general contractor and the applicant upon issuing a building permit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Marion, I see your question.
Hi, thank you so much for the presentation. I have a question. I'm not sure if you described this already, and I just missed it, but I was curious about the, what you call the stoop features on, I think it was Douglas Street. And I couldn't quite tell from that rendering you had, but is there actually access to the building? Like who, who is going to, in those apartments that are right, right, sort of outside where the stoops are? Because it looked like there were, in just in the rendering, there were people kind of hanging out on the stoop. And I was just wondering how that all works.
So, compliant with the design standards of the Affordable Housing Settlement Ordinance, we have provided those brownstone-style stoop entries for residential apartment units. The second floor or the first level of residential fronting on Douglas Street, wrapping around the corner to Essex Street. That provides a human scale to the architecture, mitigates blank wall effect there at, at the ground floor where we're screening the parking and the grade is, is climbing a full building story. Those are brownstone-style stoop entries, like a brownstone apartment building.
Right into that apartment, then?
Yeah, so, so it provides, it provides a secure, if I move to the second floor plan, and perhaps I can zoom in on it, you'll see that these units here have an access. you'll see that these units here have an access, an accessible access from the residential corridor for accessibility and for daily function and access to the residential amenities. But the handful of units on the second, on the second floor, first level residential, fronting on Douglas and Essex have that private stoop entry, which would be a secure T5 access. You could, you could come and go via the street there. We feel that that would be very desirable. There, there's a movement to live downtown and to shop and spend where you live and dine and be able to return home. It gives you that sense of privacy. And when I say human scale and in the rendering, we did show a few people, but you could sit out on the step in the morning and read the paper, have a cup of coffee. Again, provides that human scale to the architecture that I think provides an appropriate transition between the adjacent single family use and and along the streetscape there.
Yeah, that makes sense. I just, I was curious if it was private to that, to that unit, which.
Are private to each, each of those units, those are private access, correct?
Okay, and then I have one more question. If you could just briefly describe, because you showed us, you know, the sample floor plans for the afford, for the market rate units. How will the affordable units be different? If you could generally describe what the differences might be.
Sure. So I mean, the general difference between the market rate units and that of the affordable units is that the size of the affordable units may be a little bit smaller than the market rate units. And that's in line with, you know, the economics associated with that unit. It's 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 a truly inclusionary housing design, so the units are spread throughout the building, have the same side by side, front door access, access to the same residential amenities throughout the project, access to structured parking, the courtyard. They will have the same appliances and fixtures as the market rate units. They will all have minimally one bathroom. They'll have, you know, they'll have the same same or comparable range and refrigerator and and living space, bedroom space, closet space. You know, the biggest difference is that the appliances perhaps maybe, you know, maybe it's not the same stainless steel model. It might be one model different. But you know, generally the same finishes interior to the unit as it relates to the flooring, the countertops, the finishes, the lighting throughout the unit.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Other questions? Guess I'll be hands cast on.
Yeah, I got a question again about the garbage. If you could describe it a little bit more specifically. How how from the, from Essex Street, does the garbage just get put out on the sidewalk? Does it go into the little outcrop or what happens to it after it comes out the building?
Sure. So I believe Mr. Alonso Fama touched on this briefly, but we've designed a refuse termination room. There are two. The primary refuse termination for residential is located here in Essex. There's a smaller one internal to the garage on the lower level that backs up to the retail holding area or I'm sorry, the refuse and recycle holding area for the for the retail. It's, it's contained and held internal to the building. Trash is picked up by a private hauler two to three times a week. But given the size of this building, perhaps it's two days a week, Tuesday mornings, Friday mornings. The timing of that pickup would comply with township ordinance in regards to hours of operation. It would generally be the same time weekly and it's it's sort of off peak hours. But a building quarter or building management will wheel two cubic yard rolling containers containing the refuse and or the recycling bins out at that scheduled pickup time of 9:30 AM on Tuesday morning or Friday morning. The trash and or recycling bins are out curbside staged within that loading area for less than 30 minutes, right? Again, it's a planned and scheduled event that's occurring weekly at the same time, complying with township ordinance.
Okay, and and the the refuse room on the southern portion of the of the site, that gets wheeled through the parking garage around the building and then into that one, or at the same time it's put out?
So that would, that would exit via Milburn and up here. So again, that would be, we have a smaller refuse termination room here to to help service the, to make it convenient for residents of the apartment community so that they recycle and 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 use refuse appropriately. And then off, and then there's an area there, it's conveniently accessed by the two small retail tenants along Milburn Avenue. And comparable to other commercial retail tenants down along Milburn Avenue, it would be picked up by private hauler. So I I envision that, again, if it's picked up Tuesday morning and Friday morning at 9:30 AM weekly, the operation may come north along Spring Street. It would pull off in the loading zone. They would front load or rear load. They would continue on their way on Essex, wrapping around, come on Milburn. They would stage here and they'd be there for all of a few minutes while they load recycling refuse and then they would be on their way to their next pickup.
Okay, and how how big do you say the containers were? Two cubic yards?
Two cubic yards. So typically in multifamily communities like this, refuse shoots terminate in a trash compactor that has a bin with a two cubic yard container. And we've designed these rooms to be able to accommodate two to three additional two cubic yard containers to be stored internal to them.
Okay, and especially down here on Milburn Ave, that won't block any vision to traffic or pedestrians walking in front of the the entrance and exit?
I don't believe so, in my opinion. Again, it's no different than other commercial operations within the downtown and long Milburn. It's a scheduled coordinated event. Those bins are brought out by building management. They're out there for a very limited period of time. And you know, there's someone on site managing that process. So it's not, you know, they're not entering the building. So building management or a quarter would be there during that operation.
Okay, thank you. Next question would be on the rooftop units. Has there been a sound study done or anything like that? I know, I'm assuming there's going to be a parapet up there and blocking some of the sound. Maybe there's some screening or something around the units. But by experience with rooftop units, you don't necessarily hear it directly at ground level, but you may hear it, let's say, a block over, a half a block over. Have there been any sound studies done or do you know of it or will it affect neighbor, the neighborhood down the street a little bit?
Specifically as it relates to this project, no. In in my experience, the, you know, the condensing units being located on the roof associated with the residential apartment units are no different than that of the condensing you may have in a single family home. They are relatively quiet and they're located up on the roof, well away, set greater than 10 feet back from the roof edge. They're not seen or perceptible from the streetscape. Sound, as we know, often is a straight line of travel. So sound from the streetscape really would not be perceptible. And from the single family homes that are closest to the project along Douglas Street, there's quite some distance there with the right of way in the street. And you know, given that distance and with the commercial neighbors adjacent to us having comparable rooftop units I can see here in the existing aerial, I really don't envision any negative impact. And again, very comparable of a multifamily community, similar to this.
Okay, and final comment, I just want to thank you and echo Mark's statements about all the green aspects of the project. I really appreciate it. I believe the community will appreciate it. And anything more you can do, again, it's even more appreciated. Thank you.
Sure. No, thank you.
Sure, I just have a quick question on the affordable units. Is the intention to have the same level of finishes designed appliances? The affordable units as the market units, because I do see that the average size of the affordable units is smaller, the three bedroom, for example, is smaller than the some of the two bedrooms. And the ordinance does say the units have to be integrated with the rest of the development. So I just wanted to understand what the intent on finishes for affordable units is.
Right, I believe, I believe the ordinance requires that they be, you know, inclusionary housing and and comply with fair share housing standards, but incorporated and mixed throughout the community, which they are. One point to note or to one, one correction is that there are no market rate three bedrooms. So the only three bedrooms being proposed are affordable three bedroom units. So that's a three bedroom, two bath unit. And you know, again, the affordable units would have the same level of finish in regards to flooring, wall, lighting, counters. They would have the same or comparable appliances. So they would have the same type of appliances, perhaps the model or finish may be slightly different, but they would have the same four burner range, same, same size refrigerator, same, same oven, you know, same heating mechanical systems, similar or the same finishes in regards to plumbing and and bathroom fixtures.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. I see Joe Steinberg and then Dave Mar. I'll come to you next.
I have a serious question and a silly question. Serious question first. Why did you, did the developer feel that it was necessary to have an entrance and exit to the parking garage on Milburn Avenue at all?
So the entrance on Milburn Avenue being, being the primary, you know, being the primary thoroughfare there invisibility, you know, or for ease of access was, that was the original design and location for access to the garage. And that complies, I think Mr. Alonso Fama provided testimony that that complies with site design standards and our traffic engineer certainly will provide testimony regarding the movement associated with that. It's comparable to the existing ingress egress or or the existing vehicular movement and curb cut, the driveway that's there today. So the existing commercial operation has a driveway that's there today, which seems to operate or operated fine when, when, when the site was fully operational. So the proposed location of that is generally in the same location of that curb cut today. Then early on in the TRC process, there was, there was discussion about creating a second vehicular ingress egress access point to that garage to mitigate some of, some of the potential concerns associated with traffic or potential queuing, which the applicant and the developer did consider and were proposing, that second location being along Spring Street. So I do believe that that's an appropriate location and that given the size of the community, the size of the structured parking deck and and movement internal to that parking deck, I think that it served, serves the community well. You have that additional parking entrance located there, especially given the requirement for the retail and the retail spaces that are associated with the parking deck.
Now, before I ask my not serious question, I'm going to ask you to put up back on the screen chair, the illustrative perspective view from the corner.
From Milburn and Douglas?
Milburn and Douglas.
Sure.
Yes, that's the one. So my question, my next question is, are those two joggers going to get hit by that car?
They're sharing the road.
They're sharing, I see.
The driver is not on the phone, they'll be good.
Yeah, yeah, they're sharing the road. Certainly hope not.
Thank you, Joe. David, you had a question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Johnson, thank you for your proposal. You've implemented some very nice design elements into your streetscape. I had, you you answered my one, one of my general questions, which was the warning indicator on the garage entrances. I think that's critical for pedestrian safety when the door opens and a car exits or or enters for that matter. Do you happen to have the occupancy number for the courtyard area?
I don't at this time and I'm not sure. I mean, the occupancy associated with, you know, certainly, I think you're referring to the building code occupancy, correct?
Correct, yeah, the complete occupancy of that courtyard area.
I, I don't, but again, the, the, the occupancy of that will be designed to comply with building code requirements per the IBC 2018 version adopted by New Jersey. And you know, again, will comply with the requisite number of plumbing fixtures, et cetera, means of egress associated with that occupancy.
Would, would the resident, I guess patio areas be included as part of that occupancy?
No, that's a separate space. That, that space is not accessible from the common. That's not a common building area. So I mean, if I were to look at this drawing here, the area, if I could sort of trace it with my mouse, but the, the, the area of pavers here would be what we would use to classify the occupancy. Then there are certain areas that get, that get netted out from that. So for instance, a walkway, you know, if there's no seating here and this is designed as more of a walkway, that's not necessarily an area that gets calculated as part of that occupancy. But these outdoor private terraces are private to those units and not considered common areas. So it wouldn't be part of the occupancy classification of the common common courtyard area, if that answers your question.
No, it does. Thank you. And finally, I I noticed you have two duplexes up on Essex, the corner of Essex and Douglas. How is the first floor serviced from the second floor? Is that a internal staircase?
Yeah, so there would be an internal staircase here. That's a great point. One of, one additional unique feature is given the prominence of the Chamford Corner here where Essex turns the corner and rounds into Douglas, we've designed two duplex units. I believe perhaps those are our two largest units, right around 2,000 square feet or so. And we are beginning to indicate an open to below area here with this X in this dashed line, representing a double height volume space at a living room or great room space. But each of those units would have access via an approximately three foot private stoop access from the street. We also have accessible access at the first floor and the second floor of that unit internal to the building. But there would be an internal stair providing access to the bedroom, the bedroom area on the second floor of that unit. First floor being the primary living area and great room, a kitchen dining and perhaps a home office nook area. But you know, truly providing for a townhouse type, type layout. You know, we think that that will be very desirable here within the downtown.
Yeah, I can see those being your two most desirable units. Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Other questions from the board for this witness before? Okay, Jorge, I see you have.
Yeah, it's just one more question on going back to the driveway along Millburn. Is there any way that you can consider to eliminate? I understand your point of view, but many towns in downtown, they don't allow to have driveways. Even though that's an existing condition, but we are moving forward to a different direction. So is there any way that you could reconsider that entrance and move it somewhere else?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know exactly how to answer that, but could that be eliminated? It could be eliminated. Is it being proposed to be eliminated? No. The application is for two access points. I think, again, if you were to eliminate it, having the only access point along Spring Street could be a potential traffic concern there as well as it relates to stacking and queuing. You know, I could defer some of that to the traffic engineer. I think that the driveway and the vehicular movement as testified to, especially given the pedestrian safety mechanisms that are being designed and planned for, will provide for a safe environment. It's similar to the existing commercial driveway that's there today. If the bank was fully operational, that would have a commercial drive. More cars exiting onto Milburn Avenue today than than what the proposed use would be.
But today is a different situation and we are going to improve the situation. So let's not go back to what it is today, because maybe what is today is the wrong way to do it. So we are trying to see if we can improve it as a town. And so do we, do we have a traffic engineer today or not? They are going to, I, I don't remember. We will have a traffic engineer today in the meeting?
Jorge, we do, but we still have to allow for public and we're already at 10 o'clock.
Okay, so that's it for me. I will ask that question to the traffic engineer.
Sure, sure, thanks. Do we have further questions? I am eager to get to the public and hopefully that if there are any questions remaining from us after. But I see Paul and then I also saw Ed. So Paul, go ahead.
Thank you, Beth. I have several questions, but I have a couple of comments first. I just want to indicate for the record that I think Mr. Johnson referred to this property as an overlay zone on more than one occasion. I just want to make it clear that the underlying zoning here is RMFAH2. That's the zoning. This is not an overlay zone. And I know you know that and the board knows that, but I just want to make that clear for the, for the record.
Thank you.
And I'd also just want to indicate for the board that the, the building architecture very much respects what are, what I describe as a comprehensive set of design and massing standards that were set forth in the under. and massing standards that were set forth in the underlying zoning. And I would also like to commend Mr. Johnson in that, in that regard for respecting that. I'd also indicate that at the TRC, we did make several suggestions for the applicant to introduce some additional design enhancements. And they were intended to provide actually even more facade relief at select locations in the form of things such as additional glazing and other features such as the piers that were described. Again, all sort of intended to soften or otherwise break up the mass of the building. And I will say the applicant did comply with all of these suggestions and requests on our part at TRC. I do just have a couple of questions on, and thank you Stuart for showing the prototypical floor plan. Because I, and I'm happy that you addressed the issue with the dens. And that the, the one unit, I think the larger two bedroom unit, you had shown a space which I think you indicated could be, can kind of construed as a den, but it was internal to the unit. It sort of flowed from the kitchen area, no doors, no closets. I'm not so sure I would classify that as, as a den per se. And so my follow-up is, do the other prototypical units have the same basic layout?
So, so yes, the other.
Stuart, in terms of space that, that someone might consider a den?
Yes, I mean, so the other product, the other prototypical units do have that capability. As it relates. So as it, you know, as it, as it relates to the market rate one bedroom units, you know, 60% of those, you know, we only have 10 market rate one bedroom units. 60 to 70% of those units have the capability to provide a den space or a nook space. For instance, this unit that we're showing here, we could certainly, in one of the stack of units here to diversify the product of unit to respond to the housing market. Perhaps we decide to shift this kitchen forward, given the depth of this unit being 30 feet. Not everyone has a eat-in kitchen need and perhaps we can create an alcove immediately upon entering into the unit. Again, could be a home office space, could be an area for a Peloton bike. We often refer to that as, as a den. A den is an alcove space. It's not a bedroom. It's not, you know, it's not, they're, they're often internal to the unit. They don't necessarily have doors or closets to them, you know, and, and a window. So there's a specific definition of a bedroom as it relates to building code in regards to fresh air and light and minimum room sizes. And as it relates to the market rate two bedroom units, there are at least 13 or so of the market rate of the 35 market rate two bedroom units that are in this 12 to 1300 square foot range that would be very attractive to an empty nester within, within this, within the housing community of Milburn Township, who may be looking to retain a apartment within the community, the residential township community. And, you know, again, so offer, offer that, offer that type space within the unit layout.
Does that, does that space in the, in the larger two bedroom, does that have window exposure?
It doesn't. So in this, in this, in this, in this larger two bedroom, this is a corner. This is a corner two bedroom unit that wraps around the corner. So we've, we've, we've located the living room here and two bedrooms here that are buffered and separated by a bathroom. Alternately, another version of this would have the living space in the corner and you would have the two bedrooms separated on either side, so mitigating sound. And this is being shown as sort of an eat-in. Again, there's going to be a variety of unit types responding to the market. This would, this, this, this unit plan would go after someone who has an heirloom table. They want a true eat-in dining area and this is proposed or shown as a knee wall with a post, which gives the space a separation but is open. It could be reconstructed or reconfigured to have a solid wall here and be open this way or a solid wall here with an opening here to allow for some natural light to flow in. Provide for a great area, again, for a home office space, home fitness area, a playroom, you know, what have you.
Right. But, but no door, no closet and, and no window exposure?
Yeah, so typically in the vast majority of these den or alcove type spaces, there likely is no, no window exposure. They typically don't have doors. If they were to have a closet, it would not have a door, right? So closet and a door often together indicate the, the, the use of the bedroom. So if there's a, if there's a closet, there's likely not a door. It's more of an open space, but, but you could certainly put a row of closets in here, which is a great opportunity for storage. Again, for that, you know, potential empty nester who's downsizing.
Okay. We had a question about to confirm that the service area facades, we, we are assuming the windows are either translucent or opaque glazing. Could you just verify that that's the case?
That is correct.
Thank you. And just on the, on the rooftop mechanical equipment, you talked about, I think, the eight foot high. It may have been the condenser units and nice, we saw the setbacks, but I'm assuming that the, the tallest appurtenances are going to be the stair tower and probably the elevator override. What's the height of, of those?
Sure. So, so the elevator overrun, right? So we have two elevators proposed. So there's two elevator overruns. The height of each of those is approximately plus or minus five feet higher than the roof surface because we're not extending the elevator up to the roof. So the, the highest appurtenance is that stair tower that we noted here. The, the bulkhead associated with that is about 11 feet. And then we would propose to taper that as the stair, as the stair risers move downward. And again, you can see that that's well set back greater than, greater than 50 feet, you know, 60 feet or so, 60, 70 feet or more from the facade and then from, from the public right away is, is almost 100 feet.
Okay. And then just lastly, did you have a, did I see a rendering or perspective showing the view or exposure of the project to the adjacent developed properties? And if so, can you just kind of describe what you would see?
Sure. Well, so it's not a rendering, but it's a rendered building elevation. So compliant with the checklist requirements, we've provided exterior elevations to scale with material callouts, building dimensions, all four sides of the building as seen from the public right away. Technically, again, we have one and two story commercial buildings along Milburn Avenue that are blocking this elevation. So really from the, from the streetscape or sidewalk, you're really not perceiving this. This is, this is set, this is set way back in the site plan. So that's the elevation along Milburn. And then the other elevation, I guess, in question would be the Spring Street elevation. And again, and again, comparably, we chose to draw this elevation as opposed to hide it and not show it. But there are one and two story commercial, commercial office buildings and garage structures along Spring Street. And, and they would block this ground floor facade here where we have parking. You know, that, that Masonry brick veneer wall on the first floor and then the upper floors of the building. You can see the comparable residential windows and articulation to that being used on the streetscape facades on the upper floors within that courtyard. So this is that courtyard that the building opens up to at level two and three.
So, so the courtyard would be on the other side of the, for lack of a better, the, the brick wall facade, correct?
It would. So, so just looking at that, so we were just looking at the Spring Street elevation, right? So we have our garage entry, storefront window that wraps around the corner at the lobby. And we have existing one, two, and maybe three stories in height with pitch proof, commercial buildings and surface parking that really mitigates view, visual, visual views of our project along Spring. But Paul, as you noted, that, that as, as the project turns the corner here, we have a few mechanical units and a, a generally blank Masonry brick veneer wall, which is an exposed foundation wall as the grading climbs back here. We would have an approximate 42 inch high parapet wall with adjacent planter. And then you saw the residential wall of the courtyard further set back to the west.
Okay. Thank, thank you. No further questions.
Great, thank you. Mr. Bluzak, before we go to the public, I think you have.
Yeah, it's just a couple of follow-up questions. I'm a little bit confused about the, the various units. The, the testimony was that seemed to indicate that you have not made a determination, for example, as to how many of the larger units you're going to have that have that additional 100 square feet. You kept referring to the market. And I guess my confusion is that this, as I understand it, this is a rental project. It's going to be built all at once. I would assume that each apartment unit is not going to be customized depending upon the initial tenant that moves in. So first of all, is everything I've said so far an accurate representation of your testimony?
Well, let me just clarify a couple of items. So I think the testimony was that, and you're correct, that this is a rental apartment community being designed and constructed as such. There are 53 total units, 45 of which are market, eight of which are affordable. I believe I provided testimony on the breakdown of the unit mix associated with the market and the affordable. I also provided testimony regarding the prototypical layouts of a typical market rate one bedroom and or two bedroom unit. We, we have 53 units in the project. We probably have, we probably, you know, we have perhaps 20 unique unit types in regards to dimension and size for the project. And each of those unit types may vary slightly and they would vary slightly, again, to respond to the residential housing market and multifamily, you know, marketing demands. So again, some of the units may have dens or home office spaces. Some of the units may accommodate a larger area for a dining or an heirloom table. Some may have an eat-in island, but that would vary internal to the units associated with, with the layout as it's developed in the schematic design process.
And when are those determinations made?
Well, they're made, they're made through the design process, right? So, so I mean, the developer has thought about, thought about the unit mix being proposed here and the prospective market. We've thought about the size of the units and the bedroom sizes to respond to the housing demand within downtown Milburn Township here. And again, the final layouts of those units are developed with the engineering drawings, right? The construction document drawings as we begin to engage mechanical engineer, the structural engineer, you know, the interior designer for the project.
Well, you're seeking now, and this may not be a question directed to you, but, but I believe you're familiar with the process. You're seeking preliminary and final site plan approval here. So the board, is it true therefore that the board will not ever see what ultimately that breakdown of units is in, in terms of, I, I recognize the number of one bedroom and two bedroom, but in terms of the configuration of each of those, as you've testified, the board will not see that final determination. All you've given us is, is prototypical one bedroom and two different two bedrooms. Is that correct?
Correct, correct. The project's been designed to comply with the ordinance and that the final layout of the units as it relates to the spatial, spatial arrangement of bedrooms and bathrooms and mechanical spaces and the kitchen layouts, whether it's an L-shaped kitchen, C-shaped kitchen, H-shaped kitchen, eat-in island or not, that will all be subject to building permit. So construction subcode official and building permit review.
No, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I was just going to say it'll have to comply with the international building code, right? So it'll have to comply with IBC 2018 New Jersey version.
Okay. Thank you. With regard to the affordable units, can you, can you give us the size of the one bedroom, two bedroom and three bedroom?
I can. That information's all listed on the drawings, but the, we have, we have one affordable one bedroom unit and it is 716 square feet. And we have five two bedroom affordable units. And they range in size from 1,026 square feet, 1,023 square feet and 1,026 square feet. And we have two affordable three bedroom units and they are, they stack and they are just under 1,200 square feet. So they're 1,193 square feet.
Okay, thank you. Remember Egglo had raised a question regarding the location of the charging stations and how that related to parking spaces? And I'm not sure I got that straight. Are, are five of those parking spaces the location for the charging stations?
Sure. So, so the final location of those I, I would propose would be a subject to resolution compliance and or building permit. But I would propose that the five spaces immediately adjacent upon entering into the community, the residential apartment community, the five spaces here on the right would become the electric vehicle charging stations. We have our accessible parking over to the left and, you know, we would have our retail spaces again in the front of the garage. The remainder of the spaces would be our standard nine by 18 residential parking spaces. The use and operation associated with the electric vehicle charging spaces will be maintained and monitored by building maintenance and any third party organization that they use associated with the level of charging station and the service, the voltage, you know, the voltage requirements associated with that. That would all be subject to final building permit and, you know, designing those requirements with the mechanical engineer.
Is it intended that the electric vehicle after being charged would remain in that space or would move out of that space to free it up for some other vehicle and, and take, take another space that's in the garage?
Yeah, it can. I don't, I don't have the final answer on how that would be managed, but again, that would be managed by, you know, full-time building management official for this building.
Where, where would the delivery vehicles on Essex Street park when there is a move in or move out situation and the cutout is occupied?
So just a little clarity on the cutout, but, but along, along Essex Street here, we are providing for a drop-off area. That allows for a full-length vehicle or van to be able to pull off in the drop-off area, drop someone off or run a package into the building to the USPS postal boxes or storage room. Immediately adjacent to that, we have a striped area and I believe Mr. LaFonza had, had provided testimony that that would accommodate SU 30 or SU 40 vehicle or a small moving van. So that is a, that's a striped area that would be signed as such. And that's where residential move-in would occur. Again, that's a scheduled and coordinated event. So the largest sized vehicles that would be utilizing that would be a small moving van or small moving truck for the one and two or three bedroom affordable apartment units and or refuse pickup, both of which are scheduled and coordinated events that do not occur at the same time and would be managed by building management.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I'd like to move to allow our public, you know, we have a few minutes left before we get to 10:30, but I'd like to offer the opportunity. I see Ms. Masaway, I think you're still here in the, the meeting. So we can call on you and then we can turn to others who have their hand raised after. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Mr. Johnson, I have a few questions. Some have already been answered through questions of, of others on the board. But with regard to the sizing of the units, so will the sizes that you show on the plans remain the same even if their configurations internally might change? So that when you're showing a one bedroom of 960 square feet, the one bedrooms will always be 960 square feet? Even if you move around kind of internally how they're made up?
Yeah, that's correct. So they will be substantially the same. My understanding is we're, we're receiving or asking for, asking for approvals for the proposed project. The number of units, the density, the size of units, the locations of the units. But yes, to answer your question is that substantially they would remain the same subject to building engineering, structural bearing walls, accommodation of mechanical plumbing, et cetera. But they were, remain the same regardless of the interior layouts.
Okay. With regard to the, you asked, you answered about the dens. With regard to the lobby on Essex and Spring, if you could pull up that elevation, I think you had a, an illustrative. If you could pull up that elevation, uh, I think you had a, an illustrative rendering of that, um, maybe A20, uh, exhibit A20. Um, which I believe is your sheet A07. So, um, you, I think you testified that this, uh, lobby is, um, maybe between floors, so like between the garage floor and the, uh, residential apartments. Is that, is that accurate?
Yes, the, uh, the finished, the finished floor level of the residential lobby here is approximately five and a half feet lower than the first level of residential above. And is approximately five and a half feet or so, five and a half, six feet higher than the finished garage floor elevation. Again, um, you know, given the fact that we're a sloping site, we've designed the project to accommodate or work with, uh, the, uh, the grading on site.
So is, um, is there an elevator option from this, uh, lobby?
There sure is. Yes.
Okay. So is it like a half a floor? Is that how it works?
Yeah. So, so we have a double-sided elevator, what's called a split-stop elevator. Uh, and, you know, essentially it'll have lobby L, you know, it'll have, uh, level two, first level residential, uh, you know, level three, and it's a fully accessible building. So, uh, both of those residential lobbies provide for an accessible entrance. Uh, the elevator provides for a vertical accessible route. Um, so yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, with regard to the, uh, I'm heading back, I'm sorry, to the different types of units. Um, in the two-bedroom unit, the, um, your number three type of unit, which was, I believe it's exhibit A19, um, and it was your sheet A03.2. There you go. And it was the number three unit, typical market rate one-bed, uh, it's actually a two-bedroom as a typo.
Correct.
Um, is there a dividing wall between the kitchen and what you have called out as the dining area? It looks like it's open. I'm just, so I'm, I'm questioning whether is that open into the kitchen or there'll be a wall there?
So as, as conceptually depicted here in this prototypical unit, yes, this is, this is visually open from this space. So if you were standing at the island preparing something, you could speak and have eyesight upon the dining area here. And again, I, I believe that, uh, I described this as a knee wall with a post here, providing some separation. Really, again, uh, providing for, you know, a, a, um, a true living dining, uh, layout here that would be very receptive in this market.
Okay, great. Um, I'd like to go back to discussion about the, about the garbage again. Um, and I think the best to look at that may be your exhibit A16, the building plan, colorized ground level floor plan. So could you explain how the garbage, um, refuse, uh, from the Milburn and Douglas Street sides? How, how does it traverse through the building or through the garage to come out for pickup? Does it go through the garage? Does it go through the, uh, lobby?
No. Um, I believe I provided previous testimony associated with this, but, uh, we have designed a refuse termination room here, uh, on the ground floor, uh, which the trash, the trash chute and trash room or refuse room on the residential's above stack with. So the chute terminates in a, in a compactor and rolling, uh, storage bin. And the retail would have access to that for, for their recycling and refuse storage. We have doors here accessing it from the parking garage in a striped area here where bins could be rolled out, uh, upon pickup day by building management. And they would be brought out through the garage or through this man door located here. And they would be, uh, picked up, uh, which would again be a scheduled and coordinated, uh, service.
Okay, and there, there's no way to allow for this pickup within the garage itself, where it would be off of the street?
No, that's, that's, that's not typical in multifamily residential, uh, development. Um, you don't usually see, uh, garbage trucks going inside apartment buildings and/or inside, uh, parking structures. Um, I believe that that would be a hazard and, 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 uh, even if you had the vertical clearance there, I think that that would be, be a hazard. It's, it's very typical operation. And again, it's no different than many of the existing commercial operations found along, uh, Milburn Avenue within the, uh, within the, uh, Commercial Business District.
Well, but you're creating a, you're creating a 57-unit multifamily apartment in the downtown. So it's a little bit different than, than the store next door putting their refuse out for a pickup, I would think. Um, where is the loading area for the retail?
So the loading area for the retail, again, uh, we're designing 3,000 square feet of retail space, uh, each of which are, and we are proposing that that be, uh, divided as two tenants, uh, so each, each of which are approximately 1,500 square feet. So that's service and convenience retail. Um, and that would load and operate comparably to other downtown, uh, commercial uses of comparable size within the downtown and the Commercial Business District. It certainly for a larger loading have the capability, uh, to utilize, uh, the drop-off and loading area at, at Essex Street. But again, based off the proposed size of that retail, I, I don't envision heavy loading and operation.
But the, the zoning ordinance does require a loading, a loading spot for retail spaces, no?
I believe, uh, Mr. LaFon, um, I believe the civil engineer provided testimony regarding that. So I believe you asked the same question and he answered that. So I'm going to defer that testimony to, to his answer or that question, I'm sorry, to his testimony.
Okay. Um, the garage, uh, entrance on Spring Street, you indicated that was, um, determined or, or, or I guess, um, um, became part of the project, uh, because you were concerned about the queuing going into the garage from Milburn Avenue. Is that accurate?
Uh, my understanding was that through, uh, through early development, uh, and evolution of the design, um, it was, it was looked at and a second, the original concept provided for one vehicular ingress, egress access point off of Milburn Avenue as currently shown, which is approximately in the same location as the existing commercial driveway of the, uh, Wells Fargo Bank use. Uh, it was conceived to add a second, uh, point of vehicular ingress and egress access to mitigate traffic concerns.
Okay, um, who would typically use the Spring Street entrance?
All, uh, all the residents of the community would have key fob access or would have EZ Pass-type access. Could use, you know, if you were dependent on where you were coming and where you were going, you know.
I guess, yeah, I guess if you're coming on, it, I, I'm, I'm asking, maybe it's a rhetorical question, but if you were coming on Milburn Avenue, why would you want to go around the block to get into, to get into the, the building if you had an access on Milburn Avenue?
Yeah. Well, I, you know, I would, I would defer that line of questioning to our traffic engineer.
Okay. Um, and as I understand the testimony, if there is one car waiting to enter into the garage, a second car entering will at the very least be on the sidewalk of Milburn Avenue, but could potentially be out into, queuing out into the street. Is that accurate?
I'm going to defer that, uh, to the traffic engineer, who I believe is up, up, up next.
Okay. Um, let me just see if I had anything else for you. Um, oh, you indicated that the refuse, uh, would come two to three times per week. Uh, is that, would that be typical for a, um, for development of this size and character?
Yes. So for, uh, for a multifamily operational, again, perhaps it's only two times a week, uh, given that this is only 53 residential apartment units. Uh, but that would be contracted with the private hauler. It'd be a scheduled service. The timing and operation associated with that would, would have to comply with township ordinance. So I don't know the specific, uh, operation, but I would believe either two to three times a week would be appropriate, uh, for this type of use.
Okay. Thank you. I, I have no other questions here.
Okay, thank you. Um, I do want to offer any other members of the public, um, the opportunity to ask questions of this witness. Uh, you would use the raise hand function, um, if you want to. Okay. Not seeing any, um, that may be our sign and our cue. Um, I also want to open it up for any, um, testimony from any members of the public.
I, Beth, I can't see any hand raising.
I don't see any hand raising either. Um, if you could.
I can't see it with the screen being shared.
Oh, I, I see it over on, I have the panel over on my side.
I can stop sharing?
Yeah, okay. I just, I, okay. Yeah, I can't see any.
Yeah.
Okay, as long as you can see it.
Okay, um, and Ed, is that I was going to go to offer anybody if they wanted to make any testimony regarding that? Or would I wait until the, sort of the conclusion of, uh, the coda?
Uh, I think we'd wait until the conclusion of the rest of the.
So let's hold that thought for the, for the evening. Um, I believe Mr. Paragoy is with us now. Um, we had discussed at the beginning of the meeting, carrying this to February 3rd. Um, Mr. Sheen, I don't know if you've been able to consult if that date is mutually agreeable.
And Mr. Paragoy is available, uh, given the hour and the fact that electricity has held out, notwithstanding the wind-driven snow, uh, it would seem appropriate, uh, not to start a new witness at 10:34.
I couldn't agree more. Um, but my question was, is, so February 3rd is good?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Um, in that case.
I move for adjourned.
Well, why don't, why don't we?
For, yeah, I knew what I was going to.
Yes. Beth, why don't you announce again? I know we, we had made a preliminary announcement about carrying the meeting with no further notice, but since we actually did so far survive, why don't you finish it up with that and then we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Perfect. So as just stated by counsel, uh, we, this is, uh, the, the formal announcement that we will be carrying this meeting until Feb, uh, Mr. Sheen, I see you raising your hand.
No, no, uh, I was just going to say something to Mr. Budzak, that's all.
Okay, then in that case, um, we're going to carry this meeting until February 3rd with no requirement to renotice. Um, and those witnesses as sworn in will, will remain as such, um, and any new witnesses we will carry and, and introduce at the appropriate time.
And it will be at 7:30 through, uh, a, a virtual platform with the, uh, notice shown, uh, entry notice shown on the website.
As well as, I believe it was on the agenda.
That is correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Steinberg, would you like to move to close this meeting?
Is it appropriate for me to move to adjourn now?
I think so.
I move to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
Thank you, Jorge. Okay, the meeting is adjourned. I believe, um, Mr. Sheen wanted to ask Mr. Boozak a question.
I, I was just going to offer to up, update or, uh, uh, update, update the evidence list and send it around, Ed.
That would be fine. Thank you, sir.
Alrighty.
All right, be safe, everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time. Have a good evening, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Night. Bye, Martha. Wake up.
I'm awake. I'm just texting. I can't see you. I'm leaving.
Bye.
I hit the doggies.